One minute.
You're representing her.
Oh, good, thank you. I just, yeah, I didn't want to hear your baby.
It's in the very back. It's on the table in the very back.
You're ready? Ready to go? All right. Good afternoon. Woo, pretty good mics here. Good afternoon. Welcome. And I apologize for my back. Apologize. Unfortunately, there was no other way to set this up so that all of the board members could see the screen, which is going to have the information on it. I want to welcome you to the May 25, 2017 joint meeting of the Board of County Commissioners, the School Board, and the Health Department. Thank you all for being here today. And I look forward to the information that we're going to receive as well as public comment. Our first speaker is Dr. Jill Amlong McKenon. She is an epidemiologist and former director of Florida Cancer Data System. And she has a presentation. She also has a plane that she has to catch. So I would encourage, after her presentation, that we take any questions at that time because she will have to leave at 3:00 to catch her plane. So, Dr. Jill, I'll turn it over to you. And please, everyone, speak directly into the mics because that's what ME TV is going to need to be able to pick up the discussion. Thank you.
Hi, and good afternoon. I wanted to thank Dr. Benke and Carrie Hardier for asking me to come today to present to y'all and for making the arrangements for me to come. Just a very brief background. It's, you notice it says "former director." I tried to retire about three years ago. I'm still a consultant with the Department of Health and the University of Miami. I am the director, was the former director of the Florida Cancer Data System. And so, I'm so happy to be here today to talk to you a little bit about your surveillance system for the state of Florida. And what I thought I would talk about is give you an overview of the Florida Cancer Data System, which is the statewide cancer surveillance system and registry. A little bit about epidemiology, a little bit about cancers, basically a cancer 101 kind of discussion. Touch very, very briefly on spatial analysis, and then walk you all through how to get data, if you don't already know how to get data, from the Florida Cancer Data System. So, very briefly, Florida Cancer Data System, or the FCDS, is legislatively mandated. It's your statewide, population-based cancer registry, and our data dates back to 1981. We started a pilot project in 1979 and '80. I wrote the initial grant. I was three, by the way, when I did write that grant in 1979. We have grown into the second-largest registry in the nation. University of Miami School of Medicine operates, has since the beginning of time, operates the cancer registry under contract with the Department of Health. This is a Department of Health function. They just contract with us at UM to do the heavy lifting. The CDC, the Centers for Disease Control, came in in 1995 and enhanced the data, the systems, all of the data systems in the nation through their National Program of Cancer Registry enhancements. And what we do is we collect primary cancers, no metastatic cancers, but with primary cancers, those are malignant and some benign cancers. Our sources of data from 1981 to the present, our very first source was hospitals. And as you well know, since 1981, the management of cancer has changed, so we have had to change with it to include more data reporting sources. So now, since 1995 to present, with the CDC's enhancement, we have been able to go to ambulatory surgical facilities, radiation therapy, pathology labs, death certificates, physician offices through several different mechanisms, and interstate data exchanges. But one of the most important things on this slide that I want you all to remember is that the data that we collect, we collect in Florida, and any data system, surveillance system in the nation collects, is looking at patient records only, the medical records. We don't have access to the patient. We don't have access to an interview or anything beyond that. So as I said, this is an important thing to remember, especially when I talk about some of the limitations of the data set. I think the data set is spectacular, but it's, so I'm going to extol its praises, but I'm also going to tell you the limitations of a data set like this. FCDS is what we call an incidence data. It is, captures all the cancer cases in the state of Florida. We have a lot of records coming across our office every year, about 200,000 cancer records when you take out the non-Florida residents, when you take out duplicates, et cetera. That's about 110 newly diagnosed cases among Floridians. That's a lot of cancer. But having said that, we're the second largest because we have the second, the population is the second largest. We have about 150,000 death records that come through the office every year from the ViraVita Statistics. About 43,000 of those are cancer-related deaths. Over a million discharge records that come through, almost a million pathology reports, and 8 million, that's not a typo, 8 million reports from physician offices in the state of Florida. So, the national criteria, I just want to set the stage to show you that how your surveillance system is working for the state of Florida. By national criteria, through the CDC, we must have at least 95 completeness, 95% completeness of all cancers in the state of Florida, and they must be coded in accordance with specific national guidelines. So, you're able to compare Florida's data to Maine's data, to Pennsylvania's data, to California's data, et cetera. We're talking apples to apples. Timeliness, data have to be into us within six months of diagnosis, and the quality indicators are no fewer than 5% discrepancies in certain key indicator fields. So, having said that, Florida's data quality based on external review by the Centers for Disease Control, we are the center of a registry of excellence based on their review. Another independent organization, which is the North American Association of Central Cancer Registries, has certified Florida as a gold registry, which is the highest certification and infers data quality of any of the gold-certified members. So, as I said, we work very, very hard at not only capturing the data, but making certain that the data are good data. How we get the data in, how do you get 2 million records in, 8 million records in, 200,000 records in, everything we showed just a moment ago? We have a web-based data transfer system. Data comes in from all of the facilities that we had listed on the other few slides. There are interactive online edits. There are online corrections. We have web-based software. I'm going to show you some of that in just a moment, to where there are data requests, interactive data queries, and some geographical information, or GIS capabilities, on our website. So, the data collected, what do we collect? So remember, we are collecting what the national standards require us to collect. So we collect, if you'll think about it, basically the who, what, when, where of cancer. So we've got patient demographics, the patient characteristics, gender, race, age, Hispanic ethnicity, et cetera. We have residents at diagnosis, which I will come back to in a moment, but that's very, very important. We have got the cancer, the actual cancer itself, the primary site. Where in the body did this cancer manifest? What is the histology, and that's the cell type? Histology means what kind of cancer it is. The stage of disease, which as many of you know is a huge indicator for prognosis of the cancer, and the date of diagnosis, that's the when part of the who, what, when, where. We collect some treatment data, some very basic treatment data, which we are augmenting from external sources, and patient status. Has the patient expired, or are they still alive? So that's basically it in a nutshell, what we collect. We augment, as I mentioned, we augment our data with mortality, vital statistics mortality data. Annual mortality rates are computed from that. We do what's called passive follow-up. So in essence, if you, we have a patient in the data system that we've had a cancer on this individual, say, since 1989, and now we have a death certificate, we link those, they're passively linked, and this patient is now expired, so then they can start beginning to do survival analyses on this. The Agency for Healthcare Administration, which is the state of Florida agency, provides us with the discharge data. So that helps us with retrospective case finding, make certain we've got all of the cases. If they're died, if they are discharged with the cancer and they're not in our system, we go back and follow them. So, cancer surveillance, the uses, again, I want to extol the virtues of surveillance systems, but I also want to step through a few of the limitations with you all as well. So detecting epidemics, if you will, there's not an epidemic of cancer that, but in epidemiology itself, a lot of, is very, very rapid. Ours, cancer is a chronic disease, so we're looking at these data over a very long period of time. Cancer data, surveillance data could use for hypothesis generating for the researchers that are looking to just do some preliminary research, hypothesis testing. They've got a hypothesis, and they can use these very, very robust data to go ahead and test these, their hypotheses. Obviously, we can characterize trends because we've got data now in Florida since 1981, and you can just apply simple lines to see if things are going up, going down, et cetera. Program evaluation within different areas. We're looking at data, are the, these, for instance, are these clinics, is this the area to put a clinic? Is this the area to where to enhance some additional breast and cervical money, et cetera, like that? So the planners can look at this. And also, it's projecting the future public health needs for the state of Florida, for the region, for the county, for everything such as that. So as I said, there's a variety of different amazing uses for surveillance systems. But also, as I said, I do want to spend a bit of time on its limitations. In epidemiology and in surveillance, what our registry is, or what any incidence registry is, is basically a cross-sectional data. What that means is we're taking data from that point in time, everything we know about that case on that particular time. We're, it, from there, the knowledge of the event, which is the cancer diagnosis, moving forward. The survivals, the surveillance systems do not directly connect, collect genetic data, residence history data, any type of exposure data. We are trying to do this in an area-based measure by adding different databases to it, but this is very, very important information, that we do not have any of these types of data collected directly with the patient record. And as I said, we rely on external databases to gather that. So, the tenants of epidemiology basically are person, place, and time. And you're going to be sick of hearing me say this before these next few slides are over, because everything we do is based on person, place, and time. It's a comparison of different parameters over time and space. So think about this. We've got the individual cancer data, person, place, and time data. The analysis happens, and then the interpretation. And again, no matter what it is that we're looking at, how we're analyzing it, for what purpose, the same basic model holds true. So, the foundation of epi research is that we're looking, we're studying patterns. We're looking that pattern, for patterns that depart from what is expected. We're looking for patterns as important clues to specific etiologies. We're looking at etiologies and risk factors. As an example, many of you may know that it was a surveillance-type system that made the original link to, from asbestos to mesothelioma. They were, that found that among the shipbuilders and people in the shipbuilding industries. And I had to say that very carefully because that is a hard thing to say, shipbuilding. So, but these are the kinds of things that bring off, out of the data, the first indication that something is going on. And then, obviously, registries often are asking more questions than they are answering, but they are a roadmap for y'all to be able to look at, the researchers to be able to look at things. In terms of our epidemiology and surveillance terms, I wanted to just go over a few of these because I'm going to show these to you as we go into the data. Our measurement terms, the number, obviously, it's the number of cases, or whatever it is that you're looking at. Accrued rate is simply the number of cases over the population for that particular area, whatever you're looking at, a county, a state, a region, et cetera. And it's just a percentage. By convention in epidemiology, we normally multiply everything by 100,000, so it's a, it's a meaningful number. So it's 125 per 100,000 rather than a decimal. Age-adjusted rates are very, very important, and that's what we look at to take out, if you will, age bias. As you all know, Florida has a very, very large retirement population. Some counties have a much larger senior population than others. Cancer is been termed a disease of the elderly. So what you want to do, when you're just looking at crude rates, all of a sudden, something's going to pop up like crazy, but really, all that's showing you is where is the population living? So when you adjust these to a standard, US standard, population, it removes the age bias. So for instance, we could compare the rates in Manatee and Pinellas perhaps with maybe Alachua, that's a younger county, or things like that. And again, you're comparing apples to apples because you've removed the age bias from this. So that's very, very important. You're going to be talking about rate ratios, which is just simply whatever rate you get over something, another rate, and you look at, and how close to 1 it is. For instance, they look at a incidence to mortality, or mortality to incidence ratio. If it's close to 1, it means people are, it's a rapidly fatal disease because they're dying at virtually the same rate that they are contracting. And age-specific rates, I missed that. That's simply a little crude rate within the age strata that you're looking at. So the 0 to 4, or the, you know, 24 to 29, 50 to 55, whatever, that's all of that is. So as I said, the numerator is always the number of cases. The denominator is simply the population. And whatever's in the numerator is in the denominator. I'm giving all of this back to our, our junior high school math there. Spatial statistics is becoming very, very much part of our lives. What it does is allows us through some very sophisticated statistical techniques, which I know how to push a button, and I know how to get the results out, but beyond that, I don't know the sophisticated statistical data that go with spatial statistics. But it evaluates the number of events in certain places, and it's as compared to areas in other areas with similar age distribution, similar things like that. So what it can identify is areas of expected events and areas of higher-than-expected events. Those are, again, those are the kinds of things that it can identify. Then you go in and look at this more closely. This is done with what we call the GIS, or the Geographical Information Systems, and as I said, some very, very lofty statistical formulas behind this. So this is what, when they're talking about a cluster, it's been used in something like this. Patterns in time and space. So, events tend to cluster. I mean, just naturally occurring thing, they cluster. But when they're naturally occurring, we normally understand them. When they are not naturally occurring, we want to investigate them. But an important thing is you've got to establish biologic plausibility. For instance, if you have an area of, if you're trying to correlate, for instance, the number of people that use yard services for their yard, and then correlate that with a particular disease, and maybe that disease, it's a very high correlation, doesn't mean anything because there's no biologic plausibility. So I just caution you to be careful when you're correlating different things, that there has to be this biologic plausibility pathway with all of that, because you, a lot of non-connected events can cluster just by, just by chance. So again, the person, time, and place is what we're looking at, at all times with the epi stuff. So, this is just a very, very brief cancer 101 lecture. And in essence, you know cancer is, is a group of cells that change for some reason, and become very dangerous, and become attacking the other good tissue within our bodies. They can, they destroy healthy tissue. And an example of like, for instance, a colon cancer. Remember, early on, I said we collect primary cancers, not metastatic cancers. Primary colon cancer, that's where the cancer started. The individual may, may pass away from liver cancer, but that is spread. That's a metastasis. That is not where the cancer originated. They, the pathologist knows that because when they do an autopsy, they can see the cells from the colon into, in the liver. So again, those are the types of things. But as I said, cancer, they will continue to grow without chemo, or surgery, or some sort of a treatment there. There are benign tumors that, that do not grow and spread the same way as, as regular cancer tumors do, but that's not to say they can't be as life-threatening as, as the other. For instance, you have a tumor, a benign tumor in your brain. No, it's not, the tumor's not going to kill you, but it's going to keep growing and killing all the other, other parts of your brain. So that's why we've begun collecting benign brain tumors as well, to understand a little bit about those types of things. But the, those are the only benign cancers that we collect. So, there are five main categories of cancer, and by categories, what I mean, these are the cell types. Remember, I mentioned histology just a bit ago. These are the types of cell types. So there's carcinomas, there are sarcomas, there are leukemias, there are lymphoma, lymphomas, and then CNS, central nervous system cancers that develop in the brain and the brain stem. But don't be fooled that there are just five cancers, because within each of these types of cancers, there are subtypes within that. So all of these make up hundreds, literally hundreds, of different diseases. So what we know about carcinomas doesn't always work for a sarcoma. So that's why there are all different types of treatment for these things. But that is the hardest thing with cancer, it's not a disease, it's hundreds of different Latency period is another very, very important thing to think about when we're talking about cancer. Latency period is basically the time, how long did it take for this cancer to grow? Either when there was a genetic malformation, when there was a exposure to some sort of carcinogen, or, or between that period and the time of diagnosis. Rule of thumb, back in the day, used to be a 20-year latency period. We have found that that's no longer the case for every cancer, cancers have different latency periods, and they vary, very different, they vary very much with regard to the cancer. But they also vary not only with the cancer, they vary with one's lifestyle, with one's DNA. I bring your attention to one of my favorite comparisons is, most lung cancer patients were smokers. Our smokers were smokers. That's proven fact. The vast majority of smokers do not get lung cancer. Why? What is in their DNA of the people that do, that have the same exposure but do not get the disease? So these are the kinds of things that we're looking at. The lifestyles are the same, but the other individuals have either the ability to have their DNA repair, disease cells, or what. So these are the kinds of things, there are so many little pieces that are involved in, in cancer. The latency problem, it is very much a problem with some diseases, and it takes time to account for the onset. So not so much in cancer, but for, for other diseases, you want to see, you know, epidemics of the flu, or pandemics of different biologic agents. That's where it's very, very important that way. Also, which is a huge thing, is the in-and-out migration. Either the healthy person effect is where the, the healthy immigrants, to where people retire here. They've been perhaps in the coal mines of Kentucky all of their life. They're healthy, they retire, they live here, now they've got cancer, they, we have to count that it is ours. We don't have a residence history of where these people are. Again, the converse of that, somebody who was born and raised here, but then went and lived somewhere else and has cancer. You know, we've got to see what their lifestyle, where their residence was at the time. So it's not, my, my whole point in this is that it's not as cut and dry as looking at some data and indicating what is, what is higher, what is lower. So this, I just wanted to show you, if you don't already know, how to get to some of the data on the, your Florida Cancer Data System. The incidence and mortality rates, these are the adjusted, the age-adjusted rates. So remember, you, you are able to compare these by, to different areas. So what we offer is the ability to look at any particular year or years, county or counties, genders, or one single gender, race, races, and whatever sites you want to look at. We've also got annual reports there and some incidents, some incidents mapped through our little GIS system on that. So, fcds-med.miami.edu is the website. I'm going to show you that right now. So this is the website, and on the statistics page at the very beginning, you can go ahead and see, if you click on the statistics page on the top, the, this comes up. You'll go ahead and click on the little map in the center. I don't think, oh, it, this does. You can click on this, or you can click on this, and it will take you to the next page. This next page will go ahead and provide you, allow you to customize whatever data you're looking at. You can look at particular cancers right here that are already pre-tapped, that are already, like for instance, head and neck, there's about 15 cancers. Here, there's 10 cancers revolved. In leukemia, there's, you know, five or six in there. Oh, so you can look at all of that, or you can look at the individual cancers. You can pull this down, look at general incidence or mortality. You can, I would suggest leaving this at the US standard population, if you'd like. If you want to look at any stage of disease, here it is. And then here are your gen, your genders and your, your races. You click process, and it brings you up a little thing here. So I looked at Manatee County, this is general incidence. The slide bar will indicate what year or years you want, and you will see the data that, based on the years, is presented down here as compared to the state rate. So this is the age-adjusted rate, the incidence rate of 8.1 per 100,000 population for Manatee. And then if you were to just take your cursor and run right over here, over Manatee, more information will pop up. As you can see by the color coding, Manatee is this light blue, this is, happens to be just, I grabbed leukemia. This happens to be the, the second to the lowest county rate for leukemia in the state of Florida for this particular time period. As you slide this, you can see it, the, the positions may change. But that's available to you on the website. Here's the same thing for mortality, the leukemia mortality. You're looking right here at, have I lost Man, is that, that, we're right here at Manatee, right? So again, we're right here in the second to the lowest death rates in the state. So again, we're right here in the second to the lowest death rates in the state for Manatee, looking at that. But there's a variety of different ways you can look at these data, and you can take screen prints, et cetera, to use the data for whatever purposes that you need. So, for more information, as I said, this is the website of your Florida Cancer Data System. I implore you to look at it. And if you will contact Mr. Gary Levin, who is now the project director, or Mr. Brad Wohler, who is our statistical manager, at 305-243-4600, they can give you more information. Or I'd be happy to, to take any questions now. But I just wanted to give you a very, very brief overview of the cancer, where, the data, where it comes from, and how we use it.
Okay. Questions from any board members? See no questions? I'm going to open it up. Questions? I'm sorry. Mr. Minor, sorry, I missed you.
You have a breakdown by county?
Yes.
Do you have any other breakdowns, like neighborhoods?
You can not, not on the website, but we do collect the address, so we can go ahead and break it down, however it needs to be broken down. It's just not presented like that on the, on the website.
Thank you.
And that's because it's GIS-based data.
It's, yeah, because we, we have a geographic indicator in there, we can do it however we want. But also, we have to be careful about, you know, confidentiality of a neighborhood as well, or stigmatizing a neighborhood. So that's why a lot of precautions are taken, so we don't go below the county level. Yeah.
Follow-up question. Do you have graphs showing increasing incidence by areas, neighborhoods?
We do indeed. We can look at those types of data as well. So by different sites and gender-race comparisons over time, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, fine. All right, Charlie?
Dr. McKinnon, is there, I'm speaking right into it. Light is on, let's, I'll just say this really loud. And this is just a higher-level question. You mentioned how retirees moved to Florida. Is there, generally speaking, do we see more cancers, or more cancers in the database? Not just in Florida, but in states where, that tend to be areas where retirees end up?
Absolutely. And that's why I took in a moment to talk to you about the crude rate. If you look at the crude rate of cancer, Florida's the highest in the nation, because we exceed even California, because we, but that's a function of the elderly population. So you, you do indeed see that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I, I want to open it up to the public to ask questions. I'm now, I'm going to call on you separately to make your comments. I just really want questions now, because I want to have the opportunity, since, as I said, she has to catch a plane, and very technical, complete presentation, appreciate it. One more time, anyone who'd like to ask a question, please come forward. Please come forward, you have to come to the microphone to ask the question. Sorry, you have to go up there where the doctor is. Please come forward, state your name for the record, and then ask your question.
Okay.
The mic is up there, you're going to have to share. This is not normally how we do public comment, but again, I want to make sure that everyone gets a chance to ask a question.
Okay. Is all of this going to be available on our websites?
My name's Joe Gilbert, I'm a professional engineer with an alkaline underground river right down the street from you all. Within six months, I could have alkaline spring water with a pH of 749.
Please ask a question of the speaker. This is not time for public comment.
I'm asking her the question. What would be the demographics if the water quality was higher? For the cancer rates? Tap water is based on cancer rates?
Please answer specifically if you have that data available.
You have the data for water supply in those counties, their level of service versus the cancer rates. Because tap water is based on cancer rates.
Please let her answer the question. Again, it says to be a specific question that she can answer.
Again, through a GIS type of thing, we can do overlays of looking at water quality, if there are data from Derm or somebody. We have done that in the past, we can take the data, and then look at the rates as compared to that through a GIS system.
That triggers, that triggers another question. Can we break it up? Groundwater versus proximity to treatment plants that are by nuclear power plants? Also, river water that have mining spills, versus just regular old groundwater in certain aquifers? Can we break it up in those categories? Because Biscayne Aquifer has the best aquifer in Florida. People are healthier down there, that I've noticed. On this side, they're pulling up rivers.
Please just ask a question.
That's the question. Can we break up the demographics, the cancer rates, with the different types of water treatment? Over here, they're mixing like five, which I don't think they should do either.
Again, the same, same answer as before. If these data are in a database somewhere, yes, I can overlay anything, and then we can look at the cancer rates with regard to things such as that.
Thank you.
Yes.
And she has her contact information, so I, please, I would ask you to go, it's up on the board, so please follow up with her directly, it's up on the screen, excuse me. And so, thank you for answering the question. Please just ask a question, and again, this is not time for public comment, we'll reserve that to the end.
Yes, this question just relates to the ArcGIS that's being used. It's just available for, um, data displayed to the public per county. But it would be very helpful if the county could have, if there was a public capability to be able to access the ArcGIS, very much like the county itself has, so that individuals can create their own overlays using the addresses of the reported cancer of victims. It doesn't stigmatize a neighborhood to be able to do that, and I'd like to know if there are any plans to make that available to the public. Thank you.
Please state your name for the record.
Catherine Edwards.
Thank you.
Um, using the ArcGIS, or any of the, the standard GIS programs are available, I guess, to anybody, you, you can get that. Having said that, getting the underlying cancer data that is geo-enabled, if you will, has the address to where it can be geospatially identified, that you can get, but there's a lengthy approval process through the Department of Health with regard to IRB, Institutional Review Board for the Protection of Human Subjects. So yes, those data are available, but there's a process that you have to go through to be able to get the underlying data. Also, it's not something as simple as, because the database itself has about 6 million incident records in it, so it's nothing that you're just going to throw into Excel, or somebody for the, for a, a, a project to look at, at certain things. But you can certainly propose that research project with the Department of Health in the Florida Cancer Data Systems data request system.
Okay, well, I, I would like to ask, because you, you stated that you can identify areas of higher-than-expected rates of certain cancers. You can identify that with your data. Has there been a request to do that for the area that is of concern today, that, around this high school? Has there been any requests to identify areas of higher-than-expected rates?
I am not certain about that. I thought the Department of Health had done something about that a number of years ago, but again, I, I am not certain about that. Patash Patel?
He did a report. Found me.
Okay. Well, I'll ask that question of anyone else up here, if they know that, I just, because this data obviously could be useful in identifying that. So, are, Dr. Bensy, are you aware of anybody doing that kind of analysis?
A report was done, I believe, back in 2007, by the Department of Health and Dr. Patel, and that was the last time. And Tom, I don't know if you have anything to add or carry in terms of data. I, I think the major issue we've, we've encountered at the Department of Health is just not having the medical record and all of these detailed demographics that the doctor mentioned, in order to really do a, a, a complete analysis of what possibly has happened. Tom?
I'm Tom Larkin, with the Environmental Health Section of the Health Department. And Dr. Bensy, you, you probably are correct, I, I, it was our former, former epidemiological folks that were working with the folks in Tallahassee, so I don't have firsthand knowledge of exactly what data they pulled, or whether they went to the cancer registry, but I believe that's correct, but I, I really don't know for certain.
Okay. Any other questions? Just please state your name for the record. Thank you.
I'm Judy Hale, and I just want to know, my son graduated from Bay Shore High. This stuff is all foreign to me, I don't understand it. I don't care about a graph for this, or a graph for California, any other state. How do I know what my son is going to get, and when is he going to get it? A lot of people have died from going to this school. Are we finally going to admit that there is something at this school that has caused this? I don't want to lose my son, and I know nobody else wanted to lose their child either. I need to know simplicity. I, this, I don't care about graphics. I want to know. Can you give me a cut-and-dry answer on that? I didn't know it was a long question.
No, it's, it's, and it's a very good question. As a mother, I want to know that as well.
And there are no answers?
There are no answers. Again, I tried to make this very complex, techno, crazy data, something that we could understand, because I just wanted the whole, to set up the background, that we in Florida spend a lot of time and money and effort in making the background data good.
But Steve, this isn't telling me anything more, right now, than what I knew when I walked in.
And, and we appreciate your question, we know that is the reason why so many people are here today, because they want answers. I think what we have is a presentation on data. What data is available, how it can be gathered. What we don't have is a study that's taken this data and applied it, from what I've heard. So I don't think we have an answer, and I, I hesitate to allow you to speak longer, because this was really just to ask questions specifically.
I'd like to ask you a question.
I'm sorry, you'll have an opportunity to do that when we open it up for public comment. I just wanted, because she has a plane to catch, to make sure if there were questions. I'm sorry, you'll have to come back up, and you will have that opportunity when all the presentations are done, and everyone will have a chance to make public comment at that time.
You know, my last comment to that is, again, that's why I tried to present, there are so many factors in any disease. Why, why does the person next to you get the flu and you don't, when you're both sneezed upon? So there are a lot of factors, and again, data is the underpinning to these answers. So that's all I was trying to show y'all today, is that the data are robust, and we spend a lot of time trying to make the data correct and accurate.
Go ahead.
Okay. You know, thank you. Excellent presentation, is like a fire hydrant spewing out a lot of information. Is this going to be available, you know, to the county and the school board? Your presentation that was on the screen?
Yes, I, I've left it here, and I left it with your official recorder, reporter over there in the corner. So yes, it is.
Okay, thank you very much.
Commissioner Baugh?
Yeah, I just, I can't tell if it's working or not. I just wanted to say thank you. I thought your presentation was very good, a lot of good information. I had no idea that this site was available and could give us so much information. So it's a good place to start. I realize that, you know, here you are, and we have a lot of, of parents that are here today, and, and I'm like you, I'm a mother of four with 10 grandchildren, I get it. But I, I just want to say thank you, because it is a good place for us to be able to start to try and get information. So thank you.
Yes, thank you, it's my pleasure.
The data doesn't have the resolution required.
Okay, please, you cannot shout from the audience, that it, we cannot have people shouting from the audience, and you will have an opportunity to make public comment at the end of everyone's presentation, about what, anything you hear today. So any other questions? So thank you for being here, and your information, and I'm sure many will want to follow up on how to use this information.
And thank you for the comment.
That's always the question with data, how to use it best to get what we need to get.
And thank you very much for accommodating my, my flight schedule. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right. At this time, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Rob Brown from Manatee County, and take it from there.
Good afternoon. My name's Rob Brown, I'm the Division Manager from Environmental Protection Division, Parks and Natural Resources. What I wanted to do today was just to kind of bring the school board folks up to speed on the presentation that we gave to the, our county commissioners about a month ago, and bring in some new information about another site that has been identified. First off, I mean, I know the school board members, I know your attorney, and I know your superintendent, but again, just to give you a little bit about my background, so you feel comfortable with the information I'm giving you, I have been with the county for 29 years, in a role that has dealt with many contaminated sites. I've had the privilege to work with Potty Point, the Wellcraft release, Talavast amongst others. So we have quite a bit of background dealing with these types of situations. And I've got a bachelor's degree in chemistry, a master's degree in chemical oceanography, and spent nearly 40 years now working on the environmental fate and effects of chemicals in the natural systems. I'm not, don't talk about health. I don't, don't communicate my environmental information and data into health effects, and I, you know, I, I don't think chemist scientists should, should do that. So with that, I'm going to kind of briefly go through the, the information that we had presented at County Commission meeting on the irrigation wells on-site, the pollutant storage tanks on-site, and of course, there's been mention, again, speculation that another facility called Riverside Products has some sort of connection to this site, and I've been in discussion with FDIP, sorry, they couldn't be here today, but they've issued a, a white paper, which I got the other day. Clerk has it, I've got, I've got some hard copies for the commissioners, if, if they're interested. So with that, again, very briefly, we identified four irrigation wells on the old Bay Shore, and we're splitting it up between Bay Shore and MTI, because that's the way we had dealt with it years ago, combination of Bay Shore, MTI sites. Two wells are active, and two wells were plugged in 1996, and we cannot identify any potable wells on the, either the Bay Shore or MTI sites. And again, our utility folks are available to talk about the potable water supplies. If you take those back in the past, thanks. Again, this is, I believe, the school was demolished, and the new school was built around 1999, so this is a 1995 aerial, which kind of shows the, the location of where the wells were adjacent to the old school building. The, the, the yellow stars are the ones that are still active and in use today, and the red stars are the ones that were abandoned. Again, this is in 2015, what it looks like, the site looks like today. The two wells are the ones that are still being used, the other two wells have been plugged. That's the, that's the well that was near the roundabout in front of the school, and this is the well that's actually located underneath the tennis courts. And this is the pump controls for that. Okay, the pollutant storage tanks, which had also been identified as, as an issue. Again, Manatee County's been basically contracted with the, the state since 1989 to deal with pollutant storage tanks throughout the county, whether it's school boards, private, other public sectors. We didn't do our own at that time, well, actually, initially we did, we were part of the Health Department at that time, and we looked at the county's facilities as well. So the rules came out, and, state rules came out in 1984, so around 1989, when we got contracts with the state, there were additional requirements, so a lot of facilities, including the school board, didn't want to go through, and doing a lot of upgrades, spending a lot of money on insurance and so forth, they just opted to abandon those facilities. So historically, our records indicate that there were over 20 facilities within the school board system that had tanks. And most of them were emergency generators and heating oil tanks, and they were either regulated diesel or non-regulated tanks. And as I said, many of the unregulated tanks, meaning they didn't meet the threshold, they were too small, under, under the, the threshold of size or volume, and again, what we a lot of money on insurance and so forth, they just opted to abandon those facilities. So historically, our records indicate that there were over 20 facilities within the school board system that had tanks. And most of them were emergency generators and heating oil tanks. And they were either regulated diesel or non-regulated tanks. And as I said, many of the unregulated tanks, meaning they didn't meet the threshold, they were too small, under the threshold of size or volume. And again, what we did was, we registered them. Then they were actively assessed and closed properly. So there's documentation for that. Bay Shore High School proper had two registered underground storage tanks, a 350 gallon heating oil tank and a 1,000 gallon emergency generator tank. And both of them were located south of the gymnasium. The heating oil tank was removed in September 1989 by a licensed contractor and the closure was performed by a qualified environmental consulting firm. And it's an oversight process. The tank contractor removes the tank, the environmental folks do the monitoring while the tank is being removed. And again, our staff was there to oversee that as well, see if we see anything unusual. Two soil samples were collected, two groundwater samples were collected, and then all tested below the action level and most protected, tested below laboratory detection limits. I know this is getting a little technical, but the issue is, is that we can detect anything. I mean, I'm a chemist. I, you know, I was working in areas where we were detecting things at parts per trillion level, you know. It's like one molecule in this room. I mean, it's very, very, very low quality. I mean, low quantities. The issue is, is that just because you detect something does not mean it's either a health risk or it's an environmental risk. We have, you know, sites throughout the county in the 70s and 80s with old tanks. A lot of them are still, we're working on to get them cleaned up. But we first make sure that we, for health reasons, public health reasons, to make sure that we cut off the, or identify pathways. And as you probably recognize, I mean, to get cancer from any chemicals or any exposure, you have to somehow get it into the biological system as Dr. McKinnon explained. And it's normally through ingestion, mouth, eating, drinking, dermal exposure in your skin, or inhalation. So the first thing we do is try to make sure that those pathways are identified and eliminated. So that's what we do when we're looking at these data, to see whether the concentration's high enough and the pathways are compromised. Just briefly, emergency generator tank, similar scenario. It was removed in 1995 by a licensed contractor. The closure performed by an environmental consulting firm. And soil vapor readings. Now what this is, is that, you know, we just don't use our nose to go identify if there's, you know, petroleum on the ground when we're doing that. We have meters, organic vapor analyzers, sniffers if you want to, you know, so-called. And as the tank is removed and as the ground is exposed, the consultant will be monitoring the soils to see whether there's any contamination there. If it is, they will remove the soil. Once you remove that soil, again, it removes a pathway. And then remove the soil till where they're below the detectable limits. And then finally, the groundwater sample to see whether there's any groundwater. If there's no evidence of any soil contamination, then it's almost positive you won't see any groundwater contamination from that tank or facility. In FDEP, as was mentioned earlier, there was another assessment done in 2007 of this site. Additional groundwater samples and soil samples were collected. There was some minimal soil contamination identified, but it was, again, identified as maybe more affected by the asphalt in that area than anything else. So it was attributed to the adjacent asphalt. And again, no further action was requested at the time. MTI VOTEC, six registered underground, the USTs, underground storage tanks, four heating oil, one emergency generator, 8,000, and one gasoline at 2,000. The heating oil closures, again, removed in 1989, same thing. Groundwater and soil samples were collected and they were below detection limits. And again, 1990 and 91, additional sampling was done. The emergency generator tank was closed in 93. No discharge reports or indication of contamination. And the gasoline tank was removed in 1990. Again, consulting, qualified environmental consulting firm, our oversight, OVA readings were taken, revealing no contamination and no discharge was indicated from that site. More recently, our department received a complaint from FDEP in February about the demolition of the old MTI site and said there were other tanks on the site. When our inspector went out there, there were three small tanks, less than 550 gallons, which is our regulatory threshold, were noted on the property. The tanks were empty and were identified as previously used for storing used oils in probably the automotive and the marine repair shops. We did observe some small staining on the soil, which is, you know, not atypical when you're moving those tanks around. There's the picture of the tanks and the staining in the middle there. We had them remove that and treat it and clean up the site. Okay, now we get into this Riverside Products, which is, I don't know how it's been tagged to be part of this Bay Shore discussion, but we didn't bring it up at the last meeting because it's, really is not relative to our discussion here. Again, discussed it with FDEP. They are doing the oversight of the remediation at that facility. I also want to discuss this term, Superfund Site. Again, our terms mean something and when they're used out of context, it's kind of misleading sometimes. And I'll just give you the general conclusions of what this white paper that DEP has put out. First off, Riverside Products, again, I was involved in this one at the very beginning as well. One of my staff members, we do a program called the Small Quantity Generators Hazardous Waste, where we go look at commercial facilities and we try to help them, it's a non-regulatory program, we try to help them manage their waste properly so it's not, one, costly to them, and two, doesn't have the environmental and health exposures. While we were on this site, our staff observes some oil staining on the property adjacent to the building where they were doing machining. They did machines, machined different types of metals. And then the cuttings were placed in drums and placed outside. Well, we won't allow that anymore. It was placed on bare ground. Those tanks, of course, get rusty and leak and that oil went into the ground. We had them kind of do an evaluation to see what the scope of it was about. They presented this report entitled Contamination Evaluation in May of 1989. It showed pretty significant contamination, oil contamination, and some of the metals in the soil and a pond adjacent to that property. So we immediately referred this to the state. We don't have the authority or the ability to do remediation, require remediation and assessments of property and doing cleanups. That's at that part point and it was Department of Environmental Regulation, I believe, which is now for Department of Environmental Protection. So in June of 91, the department entered into a consent order, which is an agreement between the responsible party and the state that they would go through the process of identifying the extent of contamination and do the remedial action activities required. This was ongoing, however, in 1994, Riverside Products declared bankruptcy. And so all of the remediation rehabilitation activities ceased at that time. So in April of 96, National Industries Property LLC purchased the property from Riverside Products out of bankruptcy. They started doing some of the rehabilitation activities. Again, this is fairly costly just to do soil removal and some groundwater removals, you know, within the hundreds of thousands of dollars. So they wanted to see if there was some support from the state to help clean this up. So in 1996, the state, or the site information was sent to Tallahassee. This is my communication with the current director at the Southwest District Office. It was sent to the state for consideration for state funding to assist the rehabilitation. The state in turn then sent it to EPA for CIRCLA federal assistance. Now, CIRCLA is, if you don't know, again, we use a lot of acronyms, sorry. It's a fact. CIRCLA is the Comprehensive Environmental Resource Compensation and Liability Act of 1980, better known as Superfund. Okay? And what they do is they evaluate the information. Again, they look to the same, pretty similar things that we do and the state does, is looking at potential pathways, health effects, environmental impacts, and so forth. And then they make a ranking. And if it ranks high enough, then it's placed on the national priority list. Well, the CIRCLA screening was conducted, but they concluded that the site posed a low risk to human health and to the environment. And so they weren't going to put it on the national priority list. This is just, you can't read it here, but the status, it's got a number. It's, the status is NFRAP, is no further remedial action planned. And it does not qualify for the national priorities list. So they did the evaluation. It didn't rank high enough. So they sent it back to the state of Florida and say, you deal with it. Now, Tallahassee looked at it and said, we still don't have funding available to clean it up and assist. So they denied that and they returned it back to the district office in Tampa and said, okay, we need you to follow up on additional enforcement action to get the responsible party to clean it up. Same time, they were doing some, you know, getting, gathering some information, just a little bit of the geology here in Florida. When we're talking groundwater, it's not uniform throughout, you know, our system here. We have basically, we have three aquifers here in Florida. The superficial aquifer, again, most of you are familiar with. If you're like me, trying to dig post holes in the middle of the summer, you know, immediately you hit water. And that goes down sometimes to 20 to 30 feet. And then there's a aquaclude or a confining layer. Beneath that is the intermediate aquifer. Again, the immediate aquifer is the primary aquifer that folks like to put the domestic wells in. And then below that is the Floridian aquifer, which, again, the commercial, industrial, and the agricultural community will tap into the Floridian aquifer. So again, we were looking at, to make sure that there was nothing in the deeper water. They did deep well sampling and they found no detections of the volatile organic compounds or the VOCs above the groundwater cleanup target levels. They tried another route in 2008. They proposed a NAM, which is a natural attenuation monitoring only plan. These compounds, when they get into the natural environment, there are bacterias, there are, you know, depending on the order of pH, the chemistry, the soils, they're natural systems, they're going to break these chemicals down. And we have quite a few facilities that, you know, they're not high enough. It's very costly to do physical removal of the water, treating it, and put it back. So they'll try to just say, well, sometimes they'll add some nutrients and critters, you know, themselves to try to get the biological activity up, or they'll let it naturally degrade itself. So they submitted a plan in 2008 for this natural attenuation. DEP at the time had some questions, concerns. The responsible party didn't respond back. So it just kind of, kind of sat there for a while. And then finally, in January of 2014, FDEP really reestablished communication with the responsible party and entered into a new consent order. And again, all of this is outlined in the white paper. They're moving forward now and doing the remediation. Now, some of the important scientific information that we gathered from this is, you know, again, I'm talking about the pathways. How would chemicals from Riverside Products up here get to Bay Shore to affect anyone? How would that happen? And that's one of the first things we look at when you find there is either soil. Soil's easy to remediate. You can dig it up, have it thermally treated if it's petroleum product or hazardous waste landfill. Groundwater is a little bit more difficult. Like I said, you can either pump it and treat it on the surface and inject it back. You can provide biological treatment or naturally attenuate. But the first thing you have to do is delineate where it is and where it's going to look at any potential affected partners. So here we have Riverside Products here.
Up here in the circle.
And that's, that's the Bay Shore campus. It's approximately one mile due south of this. Okay? This is just an example of all the wells that we're putting around Riverside Products to look at. Again, what we do is contours. You put multiple wells here and you look at concentrations in those different wells and you can draw contour maps. I mean, most people did this in high school, looking at elevation of ground levels. We can do the same thing in groundwater as well. So with all of this information, one of the first things we want to look at is groundwater flow. Where's the groundwater flowing? Again, if you, I'm the Gulf of Mexico over here. Most of the groundwater flow in this official aquifer in this region flows south southwest from the site to the largest open body of water, which is the Gulf of Mexico. Somewhere farther north may flow to Manatee River. To check what's happening in Bay Shore, the 2007 report, same effect. This was the groundwater flow direction from Bay Shore. They're both heading southwest.
This direction.
They don't intercept. So that's a very important part when you're looking at affected properties. Now, again, one of the big issues is trying to figure out where these chemicals are going. The biggest issue that they have, or the most significant contaminative concern they have in Riverside Products right now they're dealing with is vinyl chloride. And again, they use the contour map and that tongue, and if anybody's seen any of the contour maps that we've had Lockheed Martin do for the Tallavasque community, they're all over the place. This one's a pretty simple map. It's going in the south-south direction. They've identified the boundaries of the concentration of the vinyl chloride. Now they can put in a plan now to remediate that. They had some difficulties getting the final edge of that plume primarily because the adjacent property owner really didn't want them there to do testing. So they had to go to court and actually get them, to allow them to do that. So again, it's a very isolated, small footprint of what this contamination is doing off of Riverside Products. And again, this is the most recent information. So that's nearly 25 years and that's as far as it's gone with very limited groundwater remediation during those 25-year period. Additional, some information that the Health Department is part of the DEP package. Again, looking at, okay, what's the exposure route? There's potential, they've identified within a quarter mile radius. And again, that's very conservative when you look at the movement of some of these chemicals in the groundwater. It takes a very long time for it to move any distance. But in a quarter mile radius, they identified two domestic wells. They were sampled and there was no detection. And that one is almost due south, just adjacent to the property. Again, so it's an indication that it's not having any impact. So just finally, the conclusions are that, you know, we only identified irrigation wells at the Bay Shore site, not the potable wells, public supply wells that would have linked to that ingestion type of exposure. The USTs and ASTs both on the site were all closed properly. And based on the standards, there's no actionable contamination identified. So, and again, the Riverside Products contamination is localized and does not impact the Bay Shore High Campus. And again, both of these processes, we do, we do hundreds since, you know, late 80s, thousands of these sites. They're not really spectacular. They're pretty straightforward going in, identifying the, you know, the facilities, the tanks, do the closures, and that's it. So hopefully, this will address some of the concerns that the boards may have regarding the environmental may have regarding the environmental conditions at, at both of these sites.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Rob. Any questions for Rob and his presentation? Uh, Commissioner Kennedy, then Whitmore.
Thank you for the presentation. Um, I am not an expert, I'm not a scientist, so this is coming from a layperson's perspective, these questions. Um, but the, the original business closed in 1996. Is that correct? Ninety-four?
Uh, yeah, national, national, um...
Riverside, you're talking about?
Yeah. NIP, which what?
Sorry, well, I'll be, obviously Riverside Products closed in 1994.
Right.
Okay. And there has been no other activity, industrial activity on that site since the building was purchased by the owner?
No, no, no. Again, that's, that's a very important point, is that once, once that operation was identified, um, you know, action was taken to prevent additional contamination. Uh, the tank, you know, the, the, the drums were removed, the, you know, the progress moved and, and the systems, you know, only, they only operated a few more years. They built, uh, if I can remember back then, they built a, uh, you know, concrete slab with a cover over it to, to make sure that none of, none of those, uh, waste materials were stored on, on the ground again.
Okay. So the, I'll take you to figure nine, which is the vinyl chloride impacted groundwater plume?
Hmm.
That, that plume exists in 2016?
Um, correct. I believe, yeah, it was revised, it was revised in January. So that's the most recent information.
Okay, so, so it hasn't been, it had not been in operation for, you know, twenty years? And the contaminants are still on the ground?
Correct.
And then the groundwater, well, let me, let me, let me not get ahead of myself. So the, the contaminants are still on the ground. Um, you mentioned the different surface level or, or depths at which the, at the groundwater is running or, or sitting.
Hmm.
What do those contaminants do? Do they, are they just floating around in groundwater? Do they sink and just continue to contaminate?
And, and again, there's different, uh, they react differently. Um, some contaminants are, I mean, the contaminants are concerned, again, in the volatile organic, again, a lot of them were cleaning solvents. We had issue with, uh, perch, perchloroethylene with the dry cleaning, gasoline, diesel, uh, a lot of cleaning solvents. Some of them have different components. Some of them will dissolve in water, some of them are admissible in water, some will attach to soils and not readily released, and then others will, uh, will float on the superficial, other ones will sink to the bottom. So that's why you, you have to do a, you know, a stratified, uh, evaluation to see it, and once you identify what the chemicals of concern are, you know, type the pathway to, to look at as far as how, how to remediate that. So, yeah, there's, this one again is, is pretty much just hanging out there. It's moving, it's going with the water flow. And again, it, it's not like, the groundwater is not flowing like a river. It's not, it's, you know, it's millimeters per year because it's got to go through soil. It depends on the soil types, uh, other confining, uh, issues. So it takes a long time for it to, to really move and migrate, uh, off, off site. So that's why I said it's, you know, this is after, you know, twenty-five years. This is, this is what they have identified as the, the migration.
Okay. Carol, I have like two more things and then I'll pass them on. Um, the, I, I just, your, if you could go to the, um, ground, the, the contour chart, which is my figure three.
Which one?
There you go, right there.
They're all contours.
And you showed this, this contour chart and then the one from the Bay Shore. Uh, there you go. And so they're both flowing in the south southwest direction.
Correct.
Um, is it fair to assume though that all the property between is flowing in the same direction? Again, this is a layperson.
In, in general, yeah. I mean, just to, in a, in a broad brush approach, like I said, you know, Florida's really flat and we have, you know, uh, just slight elevation changes will, will tilt something in one direction or the other. Like I said, if, uh, and, and, and this groundwater, this official groundwater is going to try to find the path of least resistance to the lowest area. So here it's, it's, you know, our biggest lowest area is the Gulf of Mexico here. Uh, if it's adjacent to like the Manatee River, um, very close, it may flow to the river. So that's, that's what it's doing. It's, it's flowing basically downhill.
And then I just have one more for you, and this is on the, um, the, the table with the...
No. I didn't discuss the table because that's real technical.
Um, could you flip it real quick if you don't mind, please?
I don't have the ta, I don't think I have the table up here.
Oh, you don't have it on your PowerPoint? Okay. Um, do you have a copy of it in front of you that you can reference?
Yeah, I do.
Okay. Um, the, the highlighted, and there's multiple chemicals listed across the top, um, and it lists the different monitoring, monitoring wells. Um, and, you know, you can see the same thing in monitoring well eight and mon, monitoring well eleven, um, which are on the, the charts shows are on the northeast corner of the building, have, you know, picked up, um, especially the vinyl chloride. But the, and we're missing a little notation, but, you know, again, not a scientist, but... Yeah, exactly. I think that one eight, that's eight you just pointed to? And, and eleven is just to its left a little bit? That, that one's eight and then eleven's to the left?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And again, this is, this is where the drums were stored, that side of the building. The drums were stored on that side of the building, so that's where the highest concentrations were.
Okay. And then I just have, I just have one more. Um, the abbreviation that's used for the, the chemical or the compound is TDS. T's in Tom, David, Sam.
Oh, total dissolved solids.
Okay. Thank you. I was just curious what that meant.
Suspended solids and, uh, in the water called, in groundwater.
Okay. Thank you.
Carol? Um, okay. Thank you for the geology lesson. There, you know, I went to school there, Mickey went to school there. Actually, I just remembered when you were talking about the, uh, the barrels that were found at MTI. Um, my ex-husband went there, um, at the auto body repair, and actually he died of bladder cancer. Not that there, I mean, has anybody, I know we always talked about the groundwater since I can remember, and I know Cheryl's been working on this for many years and it came to light when I, um, when we talked about this. Has anybody ever looked at what was in the buildings or, I mean, that may not be your deal, Rob, but, um, you know, the school was torn down, um, both buildings were torn down. If there's no correlation with, with what's in the soil or the water, asbestos can't do all these different types of cancers. Is there somebody here, Dr. Bensy? I know asbestos is lung cancers.
Correct.
And, uh, but it's not some of the other cancers that I've heard. We did get some documentation about, um, the cla, the cancer clusters didn't match for what we're seeing. There's not like, like in Tallavasque, you could kind of tie some of it together versus not here. But did anybody ever look in the, at the buildings for all the schools? Do you know? Anybody?
Not to my knowledge, but I'll refer to Tom, but if I could just add to what you're saying, I, I think it's very important from a medical standpoint to say, it's extremely important to have the medical records of these individuals to find out demographically what possible linkages there could be. Because, for example, vinyl chloride, yes, causes cancer, but it's a specific type of cancer in the liver. Um, so we really need to be cautious because, um, cancer is common and, and you don't want to use that term, uh, unemotionally, because I know that there, that it's, it's an extremely emotional issue that we're dealing with here. But from a scientific standpoint, we really need to understand, um, that when we talk about cancer clusters, typically, um, there are a large number of one specific type of cancer.
Right.
Like you're saying. Um, or it's an extremely rare type of cancer that's found. Um, or it's something in an age group that's not typically found. So I, what we're saying is based on what we have seen in the past, and I know this has gone on for many, many years, and some records may not even be available anymore because most medical records are only held for seven years. How do we look to really see the demographic information? We need to find out. And to see what Dr. McKinnon presented, based on the information countywide, there was no uptick of any particular types of leukemia or, or other cancers. Now, we can go into more detail as Mr. Minor asked for, but again, we need the specific information on those individuals. And we don't have that right now.
Uh, from you being at the health department, I know medical records are, um, destroyed after seven years, but are pathology and histology also destroyed after seven years by state law?
Well, I believe that having this registry will be extremely useful because if those persons are already in the registry, we just need their names and their date of birth and that demographic information to start looking back and into more detail, even though we, countywide, we're not seeing anything. Um, we've looked environmentally, we're not seeing anything. We need to look medically because that's usually where you start. If you see a medical change in the rates in the community of cancer, a specific type of cancer, then you look for what's causing it. We're in reverse, we're looking for things that cause cancer, but we haven't looked at the medical records to show that there is a potential linkage or trend. And we need that information first in order to move forward. And Carrie, part of my epidemiologist, she's here. Carrie, do you want to add anything from an epi standpoint?
Dr. Bensy, let me just jump in real quick, um, because we were talking about asbestos. Uh, school board commissioned, uh, a consulting company to do an environmental assessment of Bay Shore High. And I'll, and in this report that they had commissioned, they do have a, a couple of paragraphs on asbestos. Inspection for asbestos containing building materials, um, was not included in the scope of their, their project or this report. However, according to information provided, all facilities in both schools, and both schools being Bay Shore High and MTI or the VOTAC, um, have been surveyed for asbestos containing materials. Materials identified as having asbestos, uh, content have either been, uh, previously removed or are being addressed as appropriate procedures and equipment as required. And then the report concludes that no significant hazards were noted during the environmental assessment review. So that's the information we have on asbestos pertaining to both Bay Shore and, and the VOTAC.
But the correlation, we were hearing, what we hear, it's not just one type of cancer and asbestos, that's why I was asking you, Dr. Bensy. Asbestos is a, a certain kind of cancer that it causes, and then these other cancers, that's why I was wondering, had anybody done, I mean, if it's not related to groundwater, had anybody ever done anything on the buildings before they tore them down besides just asbestos? Because that wouldn't answer a lot of the other concerns with the other cancers or contaminants. No?
No.
Not torn?
Oh, Dr.?
I'm going to ask Mr. Barber because there are other reports related to the buildings.
Okay.
I'll ask him to come forward.
Mr. Barber?
Hi, I'm Mike Barber. I'm the director of communications for the school district. This is Linda Lambert. She's our public records associate. And, uh, we do have boxes of documents, uh, with all kinds of tests related to Bay Shore High School. Uh, all kinds of tests on the building. And, uh, we've had a, a number of public requests for them over the years. And I'm going to have Linda just summarize a little bit about, not what the findings say per se, but the, the kind of, uh, testing that's been done.
Basically, in addition to the soil tests and underground storage tanks and everything, we also have radon testing, we have air monitor testing, we also have the asbestos. So we basically have all of those tests that were done and recorded with their results. And we do have those at the office there. If anybody wants copies of them, all they have to do is contact me. I would be happy to send them to you if you'd like to have them.
Sir?
May I have a question?
Carol, are you done yet? Well, I still didn't, I mean, so that's the only testing? That's all I kind of wanted to know. It was just asbestos and nothing else kind of just came out? That's what I'm hearing, right?
Well, radon, we did...
I think she's asking if there were any results from the testing?
Yes, we do. We have those. We have results from the, we have the asbestos results like were, were given earlier. We have radon testing that was done. We have those results. We also have the air quality testing that was done on the building. We have all sorts of testing results, you know, the soil tests. We have all of those things, water samples, all of that type of documentation is in my office. So if anybody has specific information that they want, they just need to contact me, tell me what it is they're looking for. So it wasn't just a soil test and it wasn't just the underground storage tanks that were done. So we do have, you know, all of those years, starting back as soon as, I can't even tell you what the dates were, but we have years of testing that were done. We have FDEP tests and all types of things that were done.
But I think the health department maybe, has the health department seen it? That's what I kind of was getting to. You know what I mean?
Well, Tom, this is years ago, you may be able to answer, but again, the process that we're going through is the reverse of what we should be doing. We need to find out what the cancers are, is there a commonality, and then find the source. We're looking for sources, and there are many sources that can cause cancer. But according to what we're seeing, based on the limited, very limited Excel spreadsheets that we're seeing of person X having leukemia, that can happen naturally unfortunately. And until we're able to look at the medical records first and see if there is a linkage based on the history of the patient and the types of, the type of cancer is really the key. If there's a larger number of, of one type than others. And again, going back to what we saw from the registry, we're not above or there are no specific trends countywide. There may be, we need to check in more detail, but again, we need more information on these individuals in order to pull them out of the sample that's collected to see if there's anything there that we perhaps didn't see before. But that's where we need to go. We can't just keep looking for environmental issues that cause different types of cancers. Carrie?
Uh, Charles, oh, I'm sorry. Carrie, did you have something you wanted to add before?
I just want to echo, um, everything Dr. Bensy's saying. You know, and I think going back to Dr. McKinnon, the person, place and time is a really good and important place to start. And then taking into consideration those limitations that perhaps the registry won't hold for us, which is why the medical records may be important, um, going beyond where someone went to school, where they lived, um, hereditary factors, other potential exposures. Um, you know, I think if, if they've got records for some things, once we identify that potential cluster or that concern, I mean, we can revisit that with the cancer registry that was done in 2007, as Dr. McKinnon referenced, um, with Dr. Patel, who's the environmental epidemiologist that works with them. Um, you know, then we can start to move forward. There's a, a very systematic process from the Centers of Disease Control that talks about the, the steps in identifying a cancer cluster and moving forward. So, um, that would be, you know, as Dr. Bensy said, the, the proper way to go about that.
And I would say that, that's sort of been reflected in the records requests we've gotten over the last ten years is, uh, it started out, uh, specific to the, uh, storage tanks there that were removed. And, uh, so we dealt with that back, uh, you know, in 2007 and so forth. And then once, uh, we moved past that, then it was, uh, onto the water. And, uh, then, you know, now it's, you know, moving to other areas like, you know, the building and stuff like that. So, um, you know, or, uh, I'm sorry, what was the company? Riverside? So, um, you know, the, I guess the target kind of keeps shifting, but, uh, so the requests that we get change along with whatever the subject that comes up, so.
Okay. Um, Commissioner Smith had a question?
Yes, um, thank you. My question is for you, sir. Uh, Dr. Bensy, with the utmost respect, you know, no one's going to hand their medical records to the, uh, making a public document. They may hand it to a third party. But let me say this here. You, you, you mentioned a box of records. That you have. And if you want to do a public records request, you can request them. Did I hear you right?
Yes.
Okay. Those records that you have, who has reviewed them? That's qualified to review those records?
Okay, well, these records go back what?
Probably twenty, twenty or twenty-five years, I guess.
At least twenty to twenty-five years, probably longer than that because the school opened in nineteen sixty-two. We really, uh, only when this issue comes up, uh, do we pull those boxes. And as I said, um, the request, and, and we're not in the environmental protection business... request, and we're not in the environmental protection business, we're in the business of producing records. So the requests, as they came in, as I said, centered initially around the storage tanks. We've had multiple tests, I think five different tests in 1990, 1991, 1993, 1995, and 2007, centered around those storage tanks. We provided those tests to the public, and those have been public, you know, several times over the years. No one has requested to see or have the records on the building reviewed and those, the results of those tests reviewed. So that hasn't been done in quite some time. If somebody wants to do that, that's fine, as I said. Until somebody makes an actual request for those, then, you know, those records would be reviewed and the results, you know, are available.
So it's my understanding that the records that you have, you have for 25 years, that no one qualified, has reviewed those documents. You mentioned to a public records request, you keep referring to that.
Let me, let me make a, you know, I've been with the office 10 years. There's virtually nobody working at the leadership of the school district who was here when I came to work here.
Okay.
The turnover in the school district has been, you know, monumental. I can't say of somebody before I came here, because this last year, this issue last arose in 2007. That's when Senator Gal, or then Representative Galvano got involved and did the testing out at the site in 2007. Again, that issue around the storage tanks. Nobody asked at that time for, you know, records related to the actual school buildings themselves. So to my knowledge, nobody went through those records at that time and did a study of them and reported the results. Again, the interest at that time was focused on soil tests and groundwater tests. Those were produced. In my, in my 10 years with the school district, and my five years as a reporter covering the district prior to that time, and then in my five years prior to that as a reporter with the Bradenton Herald, I've never heard a request. This, this issue just came to the forefront, basically, in the late 1990s. So to my knowledge, in the 20 years, you know, that this has sort of been on the table, nobody has made a request for, you know, to see the results of the surveys related to the buildings themselves. That might predate 1999, but not since I've been associated with it.
So the individuals over the years that have done studies in the wells in different parts of the ground, they have not looked at these records that you're mentioning, to your knowledge?
No, because these are environmental firms that are hired by the Florida Department of Environmental Protection to do specific tests. The specific tests were related to those storage tanks or the other things that, you know, were concerns at that time.
But Charles, Dr. Green would like to reply to your question. So I want to give her an opportunity before you move on.
Okay, thank you.
I think during Mr. Serrano's comments, he's going to answer your question. He's going to address that specific issue.
Okay, thank you. Because I think, and I don't want to put words in commission or Whitmore mouth, but I think she was heading to the point of the building per se, has any tests been done on that? And I'm hearing we may have some records that, in I U, that may come and bring us up to date that these records may have been examined by someone that's qualified to examine these records.
Well, you have to understand that all of the tests that were done, were done by qualified, you know, environmental firms. And so the results, you know, pretty much stand for themselves. I think.
But we don't know what the results are, I'm saying.
Exactly. Again, because nobody's requested those in years. So, yeah, we can provide those.
Okay. Well, there must have been a reason for doing the test. So I would like to hear from Mr. Serrano if this is the appropriate time, if you would like to address this issue. Thank you. And Dr. Bensy has a comment while you're coming forward.
Just to clarify, I'm sorry, Commissioner, all medical records in this county and in this country are protected under HIPAA law.
Right.
Good afternoon. I'm Ron Serrano. I'm the Deputy Superintendent of Business Services and Operations for the school district. And one of the things about coming into the school district, you know, I don't have the 29 years of experience that Rob does or the amount of experience Tom does as far as looking through everything that we've done. But it offers a new set of eyes, a new set of ears to see about certain problems that have existed. I did attend the commission meeting last month and was thoroughly impressed with the quality and the expertise of the staff that did come forward. And I think everyone's kind of skirting around a certain, certain issue. The presenter today and then our Health Department physicians are talking. And I think it's important that everyone knows, if we're going to go about this, we have to go about it the right way, and the way that there are certain procedures and practices that are established. And these particular practices and procedures are in place by the Disease for Center of Control and the National Cancer Institute. And we did, Commissioner Smith, we did have an individual consultant review the county commission's meeting and the public participation. And we got his insights as well. And this is someone that we want to use to bring in to the district to look at all the records that we have and to give his professional opinion on that as well, as well as the different informations that we've been receiving from all the, from all the speakers. But first and foremost, the systematic matter to go about this is to identify a cancer cluster. And we haven't done that in 20-some years. And I think everyone has recognized that. A cancer cluster is the occurrence of a greater-than-expected number of cancer cases among a group of people in a defined geographic area over a specific period of time. A cancer cluster may be suspected when people report that several family members, friends, neighbors, or coworkers have been diagnosed with the same or related types of cancers. Most suspected cancer clusters turn out on a very detailed investigation not to be true cancer clusters. That is, no cause can be identified and the clustering of cases turns out to be a random occurrence. Now, there's a four-step process to this. And I encourage all of us to follow this if we really want to get to the heart of the matter. The first step is that an investigator will ask for details about the suspected cluster to include the different types of cancers, the number of cases of each type, the age of the people with cancer, and the area and time period, goes back to our speaker's person, time, and place over which the cancers were diagnosed, and if there's any specific environmental hazards or concerns in the affected area. That's step one. Step two is if the investigator suggests that there's a need for further evaluation, the investigator then compares that information to known cases in suspected cancer clusters with records of the state cancer register and general census data. Now, the third part, if they pass the first two, is that then there is a systematic study of the cancer that will determine a further study to be carried out to whether the cancer is associated with any factors in local environment. And sometimes, even if there is at that point, the number is so small that no further studies are conducted. But if it passes those, and step four is to further identify and have another study of feasibility, that will determine the cancer cluster as it is associated with the environmental concern. And that's something that we haven't been able to do because we haven't identified that there is a specific type of cancer, a cluster, and if there is, what is a specific tie-in to the environmental potential hazard. This is normally done, not through a school board, but is done by the County Health Department in conjunction and coordination with EPA. So of all those factors, the district is more than willing to go ahead through them. In the meanwhile, with board approval, I mean, certainly, once the cancer cluster and the information is given to the Health Department and they identify whether there is one or isn't one, or any kind of other suspects, then we could determine at that point what type of further testing should be done. If we do another test on these wells, again, we're just doing a shotgun approach. We don't know what specifically we're looking for. And we could do a test and we could do the top-of-the-line test of $40,000 or $50,000, identify 126 environmental concerns, evaluate all of them. But we still don't know what that's going to identify, if, in fact, we don't have a cancer cluster identified with a suspected areas of concentration in a certain type of cancer. In the meanwhile, like I said, we are going to have a consultant review all the documents that we have on file, all the other tests that we've already done, get his independent evaluation of those to see if there's anything else that the district or the county missed in their previous working relationships with other entities, as well as all the tests that we ran. I just concur with Rob, all the tests that he showed you, that those, we have those same exact records at the district office as well. And all of them say, we have test after test after test that says the same thing, that there was no contaminants above any specific levels, and there's no further testing required of that. But that's at the point that we're at right now. We're willing to be as transparent as can be, bring in whoever we can to assist us and looking at that. But again, we have to go back and do it the way that the National Cancer Institute suggests and the Center for Disease Control.
Thank you. Questions? Robin?
Thank you all for putting this together, so and so on. Thank you for putting this together. It, we knew this was coming up, so it would have been helpful to have had at least the process begun to assemble some of the data that you had for the other instances that, that was been determined, like the asbestos and some other things, maybe sick building and so forth. That would be nice to have an evaluation on that. Getting back to Rob's presentation addressing the irrigation wells, I'm not even addressing the tanks, the storage tanks, because I think you've done a lot of analysis on that. I didn't hear a lot of information regarding the irrigation wells themselves, how many there were, how many there still are, when, when have they been tested, when's the last time they were tested, if they're still in use. I think it was brought up at our last meeting, but I'd like that to be addressed on the record. Because from what I've been hearing from citizens that I've spoken with, a lot of the illnesses that they've experienced with their children, a lot of them were involved with sports, band, cheerleading, that they were doing a lot of outside activities on the grass that could have been polluted or contaminated from the irrigation wells for irrigating the soil. So that's part of what I'm asking for. Another thing that I've just come across a couple weeks ago at the Woodfield Ballantyne Homeowners Association meeting, there was a historian, the great, gave a great presentation on the history of Sarasota Manatee area and the settlement. And he was very good. And, you know, to spend two hours on a Monday night, he was very entertaining. And, but what he indicated was when the settlers first came here, this area in general was overridden with mosquitoes. And mosquitoes were killing people, were killing animals, and so they started getting into mosquito control. And he had a picture of a bus, a truck spraying the DDT into the air to try to, we didn't know any better back then. And the pictures of kids following these trucks spraying DDT. And we could be looking down the wrong rabbit hole. This could be a different rabbit hole. We don't know. I just really quickly looked up diseases resulting from DDT spraying, what cancers it causes and what diseases it causes. And it just, just the one website I saw was breast cancers and other cancers, male infertility, miscarriages and low birth weight, developmental delay, nervous system and liver damage, and, and other toxins. So it could be other things other than the water supply or the tanks. And it could have been most of the, I think the preponderance of people in this one area could have been exposed to other environmental contaminants in the area in general, in Bayshore Gardens all the way up to Cortez. So, but when you spray it, it gets in the water, it gets in the drinking water or the groundwater. And it could have been in the ground where the children are playing. So there could be, it would be nice to have someone who had been able to analyze maybe some of the different cancers and come up with a pattern of what's going on. But this seems like it could be a different rabbit hole explorer. Thank you.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yeah, thank you. Commissioner, I, oh, there it goes. Okay. To answer your question, there's, there's four, I believe I'm correct on this. There's four wells on the site. Two of them are not in use anymore. Two of them still are. The environmental firm that Mr. Serrano just mentioned, one of the other, after your, after your meeting last month, Dr. Green asked staff to contact, you know, a third-party outside company who has expertise in this area. And in addition to the document review that Commissioner Smith was talking about, and Mr. Serrano just explained, one of the other items they, they said would fall under the school board's, something we can do to contribute to this effort, is test the two irrigation wells, irrigation wells that are, that are still in operation. So that's kind of two quick things that we can do right, right away. Like I said, and, you know, Dr. Bensy makes a good point that, you know, perhaps we are putting the cart before the horse. And Mr. Serrano, you know, just kind of laid out, this is, or, you know, both of you have kind of laid out that this is the way we should be doing this. And, you know, we, we all have, we all have piece, a piece or pieces to do. I think these two at the beginning are our two pieces right now. You know, obviously, we are going to need, you know, medical records. And, yeah, that, that stuff's private. And to me, you know, this issue has been, and I'm not trying to deflect anything from the school district, but, you know, this issue has been framed as, you know, Bayshore High School is sick or was sick. And, you know, the presentation that, is it Mr. Brown? The presentation that Mr. Brown gave, obviously from the nature of my questions, is, you know, potentially, is this a South Bradenton issue? And who, you know, who in that neighborhood or in that community has sprinklers that are connected to groundwater? And, again, and again, I'm not, I'm not trying to spread blame, but I'm just saying, you know, not only do we need to change our process, but I think we also need to look wider. Obviously, it turned up at Bayshore potentially because there were so many people congregated on that campus that, you know, anomalies began to pop up. And I want to say one final thing about, you know, Mr. Brown, you know, words are important and the terms we use are important. And I, and I believe when the school, when the school board met about this in March, I used the term "cancer cluster." And I was using it before I actually knew what medically the term "cancer cluster" means. Maybe, maybe the better word to use is grouping or, or whatever. But I did not mean, and I apologize to the community, I did not mean to, you know, throw that out there. I was just kind of using that as a general term that I heard before. So anyway, and, you know, as has been, you know, the, I believe the best path forward out of today is, you know, what's the plan? How do we, you know, who's going to be part of the team that, you know, carries out the plan and so forth? So I, you know, I know we have lots of more coming from the, from the community on, on their thoughts on how we go from here. But anyway, I'm rambling. Sorry, I'll stop.
Robin, are you done?
It's, it's just really easy to test the water. Take it to a lab and in a couple hours or a day or so, they can determine what's in there. I think there was also pre-existing or existing lift station there that's been abandoned, but that could be tested as well to see any residue of chemicals there. So there's a lot of things that we could do, have been doing, or hopefully will do.
I just want to respond because you said it could be pretty easy. I talked to Tom Larkin specifically about that. I was not told it would be easy to test the irrigation wells, that there would have to be some protocols put forward to do that. So I, I don't want to leave that impression because I did ask specifically at the last meeting about that, what it would take to test the irrigation wells. I was not told it would be easy. I don't know if Rob and Tom want to comment. Also, that's, this is the first time I've heard about a lift station that was removed there. Is there, is there any proof of that? Because that's the first I'd ever heard, that there was a lift station on the site that was removed.
It's, it's there. It's just been abandoned, but it's still there.
Oh, okay. I don't know if you want to comment at all on the testing. And you, Dr. Green, you said you've gotten a proposal for testing the irrigation well already?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay. Great.
We have a third party who reviewed the workshop at the commission meeting, and he gave us a proposal about things we should do.
Relatively simple exercise.
Okay, great.
In the meantime, it is still highly suggested that we first need to figure out, do we have a cancer cluster? But we believe, and again, this does still have to go before.
Yeah, you have to speak directly. I'm sorry. This still has to go before our board. The two, two things that we believe we can do immediately, have a third party come in and review all the documents, and the possibility of testing the two wells that are there.
Thank you. Mr. Serrano, you want to comment on that?
Yeah, just to follow up on that, it would be at least a month's study to get all the results done. And second, the first and foremost thing that the consultant said is that the cancer cluster has to be identified first, so he knows what he's looking for.
That's exactly why I asked the question, because that was what I was told, that you can't just take a shot in the dark if you don't know what you're testing for. Commissioner Whitmore?
Just, I'm going to finish up because I know we got public comment, but it, from what we're all hearing from Dr. Bensy, who's known all over the state of Florida, who works with the state, also has all the information at grasp that she could help with, this is a process. And I think the Health Department and the state, along with our governmental entities, need to be part of that. But, and then I know at one point Galvano had talked about helping with funding to be able to do this. I don't know if that could still happen. This to me is, and I said it before, it's a public, it's a perceived public health issue. We don't know if it is or not until we actually get the data like Dr. Bensy's saying. So I totally 100% agree that maybe we've been doing it backwards and need to do it the right way. I've had people come to me about that site where I went to nursing school, MTI, and said, "Oh, I think you wanted to build a pool there," or a big recreational hall. And I said, "Well, that site I think is contaminated. I don't know if I would even consider approving that." And that was just, that was a few years ago. So I think if we're going to do something, we've got to do it right. We've got to make sure that there is no problem there, so we can all move forward, the citizens can move forward. And if there is an issue, we need to take care of it. But Dr. Bensy, I'm glad you came, and I'm glad you said something, because we probably are doing it backwards and we need to be doing it the right way. I'll be glad to find my ex-husband's, whatever you need, histologies and paths, whatever you need. But I really think there's so many different cancers that we've been hearing at the public records when people are writing us letters, that you're absolutely right, I'm not seeing just one. And you're the expert, I'm not. So, thank you. I'm glad you, and hopefully we can get the state on board and our state legislators, if you need it, and the Health Department and the school and the county. And let's just get this moving forward. These poor people have been waiting for years.
Thank you for your confidence. What needs to occur is to, again, link the existing information that we have from the community in terms of cancer to the registry, what is already there. We're not starting from the beginning. And then be able to look at our experts, whether it's at the state level as well or academia. I believe FIU School of Public Health was involved in the Tallahassee study. There are experts that can assist us in the state to look at the information and really do what Dr. McKinnon presented earlier today, to make sure we have a true, correct, valid answer to this situation.
Vanessa?
Yeah, I've sat here now for a couple hours, and I'm hearing the same thing over and over again that I heard in our commission meeting, that I've heard from the school board, and it's the same thing. So personally, I can't imagine any parent that has a child that, you know, came down with cancer that went to Bayside, I can't imagine that any of them would not freely give over those records, the health records, so that this could be looked into. You know, it's an old saying, you have to, you can't keep doing the same thing over and over again because you keep getting the same results. And that's kind of what I'm hearing. So, you know, I don't know what all the answers are. I've heard some suggestions. You know, I think we do need to do more than just test the wells again, or, you know, something along that line. We need to take it further. We need to look at the records that you have from inside the school. I'm surprised to hear that they've never been requested, and they're not here today. And the commission, I've not seen any of them. I don't know about the school board, but I would suspect that if you haven't, that would be a real good place to start. You know, I wanted this meeting to be something where we could really put our teeth into it and come up with a good idea. I don't want to sit here and keep hearing the same thing over and over again. I heard the residents that came before us in our commission meeting, and I can tell you, if I had one of my children that came down sick, I'd want some answers, and I would demand answers from the school system and the county. I realize that this property is school property, but, you know, we are in this together. So it's really, it behooves us to get some answers. Now, personally, I think that we've probably tested the water pretty much as well as we can. I mean, I've had some people say, "Maybe we didn't go deep enough." I'm not an expert. I would like to see an expert come on and give us the information that perhaps might help us in that regard. I suspect that we'll never know 100%, but what I do feel is that we could perhaps take this a little further and try and help these parents, and not only parents, but people that went to school at Bayside that are sick today. You know, it's still going on. I'm sorry, Bayshore. So, you know, we've got an obligation here. So let's stop with the, well, I'm not going to call it that. Let's stop and really put forth an effort to put this to rest once and for all. I think that, you know, we're all willing to look into this, we're all willing, I'll guarantee everybody in this room right now is willing to be a part, and given the medical records that perhaps you might need, I'm surprised that we really haven't done all that in the past. I don't know, maybe we have and we just weren't successful. But for God's sakes, let's stop, you know, going back and forth and talking about doing this and talking about doing that, and let's really do it. Dr. Bensy, you're a blessing, and I just thank you and your Health Department. You know what? This truly comes under the Health Department. So, you know what? I want to see you run with it. And I want, I want to see you do whatever needs to be done to answer the people in this room. I know the school board members feel the same, because right now they feel like they got a cloud over them and they'd like to get rid of it. So let's do it. Let's stop talking and take some action.
Dr., is it anybody else? I was going to say, Dr. Bensy, I appreciate you coming here and speaking on what needs to be done, when, because it's very important that this be done in the right order, so we don't repeat. And that's why I think it's very important that you say who will be. We've already heard the school board say what they're going to do. Appreciate that. The Health Department, I would like to hear what you're going to do in terms of trying to organize this effort to get the data. Do you have a point person that you can appoint to that?
Yes. We at the local level are responsible for data operations. This is much bigger than what a county health department does. So we will work with Tallahassee. Fortunately, in Florida, we have an integrated Department of Health, so we have experts in Tallahassee who can assist us with getting the information from the community. The community is key. We need data. We need medical information. It's, again, done through HIPAA. And then, again, if we need additional resources, we can look to academia. The issue may become funding. We'll look at that. We'll have to talk to those in Tallahassee tomorrow and find out their contacts and how they can assist us. But again, it is a public health issue, and we need, once and for all, to determine what is, is there a cause, or is this just natural cancer in our community, or there are other factors? So, again, we will take the lead, but, again, it takes the partnership. All of us here at the table, in this room and beyond, need to make sure that we're willing to provide the data that's so important to determine the real issue here.
Thank you. I think you've made that very clear, that it's going to take the participation of all of those who have unfortunately been impacted by this situation here in our community. That's what we're looking at, our community, what's happening. The people here need to come forward and make sure that they're on, that their loved ones are on that list. And if they're not, then we need to add that data in order to have the data we need to make the determination. Mr. Miner and then Mr. Cologne.
Thank you, Chair. First step, you got to have the data. To get the data, that means the families who have, have to come forward, and it sounds like the Health Department is the point to bring it to. Sign the releases, you know, have that information, use it with what, you know, the state already has to get to that first step that we've heard about that has not been done. You know, and so I guess the word is, you know, families, everybody around this table feels, you know, for your losses, the suffering that's gone on, you know, the ball rests with you to, you know, get together all the information and medical records that you have, you know, concerning your loved ones, and provide those, you know, to, you know, the Health Department. Bring that in, you know, to, you know, help show to what extent there is or is not, you know, a cluster about any particular, you know, cancer. You know, without that, there's not going to be any forward movement. That's the first step, and it's needed now. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Cologne?
Yeah, I'm just going to go on the record and agree with Commissioner Barr. I don't think there's any families that won't give up their medical records, and it's absolutely a public health issue. But the one thing I haven't heard from anyone here today is not just about the children that have been affected in the past, to whom some of them are now adults, but the children we have there right now. The school is still open, and if there's an issue there, we need to determine if that issue is ongoing. And it's very important to the school board, to the county commissioners, and to the Department of Health, that all our students, past, present, and future are protected. And I think that's critical to remember.
Okay. Yes, Chair Kennedy.
Super fast test, test, there we go. And I apologize, I wanted to say this to Commissioner Brown before she left, but the two things that the school district is, that our staff is talking about with this third-party environmental firm, neither one of these two things has been done yet. We haven't had a third-party review, the historical documentation, we haven't had anybody, there's been lots of testing done on the campus, but of these two operating irrigation wells, to Mr. Cologne's point, you know, there are students there now. My assumption is everything is fine, they're connected to, you know, except for these two wells. But these are two, these are two new things that are going to be done, and to your point, I think we're going to find that they're safe, but that, that's in the play.
Oh, that's, I forget, you guys weren't in our board meeting, because I brought that exact issue up at our board meeting. I'm thinking, "Ah, I heard this already," but that's, that's right, you guys were not in our board meeting, I forgot. But I did bring that exact issue up, so, thank you. All right, Charles.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, the commission and the school board are talking, I want to believe in putting everything on the table, because I haven't heard anything from the attorneys for both boards, and I hate for us to come to some kind of conclusion today and all of a sudden to get tired of legal things when we leave here. So I would like to hear from both legal attorneys for both respective boards on what they're hearing when we're talking about ruckus and third-party, to make sure it's done right. So we don't have a catch-22 and find out that all of a sudden both attorneys said, "Well, I don't think that's something you can do, and we need a process of transportation of giving document to that person, a trail of protestment ruckus."
Okay. Mr. Attorneys, do you have anything you want to opine on at this point? Be careful when you give them the microphone, you never know what might happen, but...
Alphabetically, I'll let Jim go first.
He's a polite man, isn't he? Madam Chair, Commissioner, what, when I've been working on this problem, we're listening to this issue, you know, for the several months that we've been hearing it, one of the things that concern me the most is to make sure all the decisions are fact-based decisions. And I felt a little bit like the discussion was getting out in front of the headlights, but hearing from the public health authorities and I think the comments being echoed around the room, saying, "We first need to define the problem before we craft the solution." And I think that's what I'm hearing the conversation say today. So as far as it being a fact-based discussion and a fact-based crafting of a solution, I don't have any legal objection or, and actually have legal encouragement that that's the direction it should be going in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mickey, any concerns from the county's position?
I've not heard anything here today in terms of a suggested course of action that strikes me as being unlawful or in any way legally infirm. So, but while I've got the microphone, I will just say something that I've said to any number of people since we've been talking about this. There needs to be an entity that constitutes the central clearinghouse for 100% of records associated with this matter. County records, school records, state records, DEP records, every stitch of paperwork needs to be funneled into a central entity that acts as the clearinghouse. And, of course, I failed to mention probably the most important grouping of records, medical records. Again, it's hard for me to imagine that any parent who has lost a child would not be more than willing to step up and provide those medical records in an instant and sign the necessary HIPAA waiver. So, so, anyway, this is my opportunity to say it publicly, there's got to be a central clearinghouse, and once everything is in a central location and properly categorized and indexed, then we can have experts begin to do the proper analysis. Thank you.
Okay, all right. The attorney got applause, what do you know? Okay. All right, I'm going to start calling folks forward to come forward, and I'm going to call you two at a time so that you're ready. Everyone gets three minutes to address us today. Please state your name for the record. First up, I have Joe Gilberti, followed by Cheryl Joswa. Or Joe's... And if Joe's not here, I'm going to have David Woodhouse come forward next.
Good afternoon. My name is Cheryl Lumson-Josa, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here today. In the county's report from April 25th that Rob Brown presented, he emphasized that there were no concerns associated with the old Bayshore and Votech properties. I disagree with his report, and today I bring copies of documents that will tell you why I disagree with the report. On page 58 of the county's own report, water test results from three monitoring wells at the old Votech property in October '89, there were samples, arsenic, cadmium, chromium, and lead were detected. It is important to note that these are just some of the carcinogenic toxins that were also at this superfund site, Riverside Products, located a mile north of the school's properties. In a memo to County Commissioner Pat Glass from Attorney for Riverside Products dated November 2nd, 1989, states that the county began reviewing the situation at Riverside Products as early as 1976, 1977. A memo dated October 90 from Assistant County Attorney Stein-Snyder through a County Attorney Rice, then to Acting Director of Pollution Control, Director Rob Brown. And this is a quote from that memo. "I believe there is no liability on behalf of the county in regard to this site. However, even if there were, the timely remediation of this site would be in the county's best interest." Another memo dated August 24th, '95, from Richard Garrity, Director of Division Management, Southwest District, to Doug Jones, Chief Bureau of Waste Cleanup. "Sufficient data exists which clearly indicate that contamination from this site is threatening public health and the environment." In a letter dated June 10th, 2016, from the Florida DEP, to the Florida DEP, I apologize, from GRR Professional Associates, "Numerous attempts have been made to contact both the GIS Department, Manatee County Engineering Department, Manatee County Planning and Zoning Department, and finally, Manatee County Public Works. As of June 10th, we've been unable to have any of the departments or agencies provide us with stormwater utilities or stormwater drainage plans for that area. It is incomprehensible to think that this superfund site was looked at as early as 1976, 1977 for contamination issues. More concerning is the..." More concerning is the fact that these toxins have been in the ground for at least four decades, and to this very day, to this very day, some of these toxins are still showing up in groundwater samples. These same toxins were in groundwater samples at the old Votec in 1989." And Mr. Barber, to answer your question, how we got from underground storage tanks to Riverside is because an epidemiologist told us to look for chlorinated solvents and metals. That's how we got there. And those same toxins caused the cancers that we have listed.
Thank you. David Woodhouse will be followed by John Rehell. I would ask you, please hold your applause, even though this is not a land you're hearing, it'll just slow us down, so, please slow us...
All right.
Thank you.
My name is David Woodhouse, thank you for letting me speak. I'm a hydrogeologist, I've been working with environmental cases probably about 45 years now, excuse me, and that includes my clients being the EPA, the Corps of Engineers, the Department of Energy, the Nuclear Regulatory Commission, and so on and so forth. So as I say, I've been in the trenches. I've sat here and listened to people who have had, fully no experience in the field, making a lot of falsehoods. We have a building, it was a school, where I agree on semantics, cancer cluster, there's almost 500 victims who were in one building who got cancer, some are living, some are dead. I think that fact speaks for itself. What could have caused the cancers? Well, it seems obvious to me that they were probably drinking water. Perhaps there was soil gas. That happens sometimes to volatiles in the ground, they migrate through fractures in the concrete, whatever, and get into a building. So, anyway, here we go. What are the possible sources? I've identified 10 at least. We can start with a large industrial plant three miles north of us, which has dumped arsenic in the ground for decades. We'll focus on this so-called Riverside Products. They use chlorinated solvents, heavy metals, so on and so forth. The one big thing I want to say to you, all these studies you've heard, they were all shallow studies. The contaminants of concern were what we call sinkers. You've heard me say this before. They sink down into the water table until they stop somewhere. Putting morning wells in at 20 feet, it's not there, it's gone. It's still migrating probably to this day, and I don't know that for a fact. But this is the stuff that's getting up into any wells. For example, we can take the wells that the school might have had, I don't know, I've heard, heard conflict in evidence. It's a straw in the ground. The contaminate starts out, sinks, and then it upwells, flows upwards to the Gulf of Mexico in the southwest direction, and it gets sucked up by the wells. The kids drink the well, bathe in it, I don't know. So that's one of my facts. But I don't have the liberty of speaking as long as other people. I'll just read you this little sentence here. This is a history of pollution of a certain site, I won't name the name, but it's nearby. This is from November 6, 1961, the St. Pete Times, and I'll just see, it's down to one sentence. "Manatee County School Board was implicated in ignoring admonitions from the county health officials that water used by public schools may be contaminated or unhealthy in some respects. The school board minutes make an oblique reference to this incident." Thank you.
Thank you. John Rehell, followed by Liz Reed.
Janet, good job of navigating around, it's not the problem. In February 99, FGS Inc. sent a report to Mr. Cooper at the Land Recovery Investment, the company that performed one of the baseline sampling events from groundwater monitoring wells at the Riverside Product Superfund Site. The documents repeatedly stated, based on their results, there continues to be exceedances on, that's how they put it in the report, on, on state limits to several compounds at various monitoring wells, vinyl chloride and benzene being two of them. There is 10, now, there is 10 years after the county's pollution control manager, Bob Brown, Rob Brown, and BOC Chair Pat Glass, and county attorneys argued, and including Mickey Palmer, he was here then, argued with Riverside Products attorneys over who was responsible for the cleanup of what already known to have contaminated, already known to have contaminated the groundwater. That's why it was a superfund site. These communications clearly stated the county knew Riverside Products was disposing of the waste oils on site from their startup in the 1960s through to the 1980s. All those documents clearly state how they mixed the metal shadings with it and actually filled, did some landfill on the property until they were told to stop. The FGS report was five years after the county chose to cap all the wells at the Bay Shore High, bulldoze the school and, and lose all of the school board documents that would explain why those decisions were made. Rob Brown says he had, has a degree in chemistry. That's good, because then there's no excuse for, for not understanding that the high, that the high levels of the same groundwater contaminated could work its way a mile down the road to a school. That's, being the manager, isn't that your job to sit there and see what threatens the, our community? Now, spoiler alert for all of you, finding the smoking gun to what is killing those in our community is not your responsibility. As you've all stated, cancer clusters are a number. It's an equation. To not want to know that equation, you've done very, very good, but there is a way to do it. For one thing, you have to send out, you have to want to know. The school board can easily identify with all, all the people who have gone there, faculty as well, the alumni. And the county has probably never, ever sent out anything telling people in the vicinity, except for, you said, the quarter-mile around Riverside. Well, as Woodhouse has explained over and over again to most of you, these things live in plumes, they take a long time. Well, what they have...
Thank you.
Okay, one more sentence, please.
We're trying to get everyone...
What they have to do is to send out in the utility bill, and find out, who does? You've never made an effort to even find out.
Thank you.
So how are you gonna know?
Thank you, John. We have Liz Reed to be followed by Patrick Moore.
Hi, my name is Liz Reed, and I'll tell you right now, I'm a parent that will sign a piece of paper right now to give you my son's medical records. I'll be the first one to tell you that I will gladly do it. My son, Ricky Speed, attended Bay Shore in 94 and 93, oh, sorry, 93, 94, and he also played football. These are two pictures I'm gonna pass around, that he hung on his wall in his bedroom. He was diagnosed with Ewing sarcoma, and these two pictures, he kept up there on his wall, and he always said, wrote on it, and it said, "It could be worse." The day he was informed there was no longer than anything they could do for him, he wrote on the bottom and said, it says, "It can." That's the day those pictures came down. Now, in 90, May of 96, six days before his 18th birthday, he was diagnosed with Ewing sarcoma, which is a very rare bone cancer, and so rare that it's very uncommon for there to be more than one case in the area. Yet, Bay Shore has two cases, my son's and Ryan Silverman. And Ricky passed away six weeks short of his 19th birthday. Tomorrow would be Ricky's 39th birthday. Now, everybody takes for granted that they get to share these memories, but for the past 21 years, what you see right there where I was sitting with the balloon, is how my family has been able to celebrate his birthday. There is no memories from him, from his 18th birthday on, that we could say, oh, remember this, or remember that. And all I'm asking for you today, well, besides that, is my daughter also, recently, eight weeks ago, was diagnosed with an autoimmune disease and had to have two hip surgeries. She attended Bay Shore 99 to 2003. She was also in band, so she was out on the fields all the time, too. All I'm asking for you today is to please work together, and tomorrow, please take a moment and remember this face, just for one minute, to let him know that you care enough to help us find answers and hopefully put us to peace, give us some peace of mind, saying that either it is or it isn't. That's all I'm asking. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Patrick Moore to be followed by Kristen Moore.
My name's Patrick Moore. It should be pointed out that, should be pointed out that the county and the district have been asked numerous times to provide information on water sources, and in almost every instance, the question has avoided vaguely, avoided or vaguely answered. Discrepancies in the answers the county provided on April 25th are pulled from documents in their own report. In November 2007, Manatee County and Manatee County District were asked by Earth Systems to provide information regarding the source of the water at Old BHS. The report stated Earth Systems contacted Woody Clay of the Manatee County Public Works Department on November 5th, 2007. Mr. Clay indicated the Bay Shore High was connected to water, public water sewer and solid waste during April 1998. The high school was connected to reclaimed water during October 2005. Mr. Clay indicated Public Works does not have any information relating to what water source the high school was using for irrigation prior to 2005, or drinking water prior to 1998. This is not the answer the Manatee County gave in its report in April 24th, 2017. In the report, the county maintained that the old school was connected to county water in 18, in 1985. We believe that this sufficient evidence to support the 2007 report that the old BHS was not connected to water, to county water or sewer prior to 1998. On November 25th, 2007, Earth Systems spoke with Todd Henson, Director of Maintenance for Manatee County School District. Mr. Henson indicated there were two wells used to irrigate athletic fields. Mr. Henson was asked to provide the depth of the wells to Earth Systems. At the time the report was prepared, he did not provide that information. The most recent, most recently in 2016, GRR Professional Services encountered difficulty in getting information while researching Riverside Products site. At the time the report was prepared, it was noted that numerous attempts have been made to contact both GIS department, Manatee County Engineering Department, Manatee County Planning and Zoning Department, and finally, Manatee County Public Works Department. As of June 10th, 2016, we have been unable to have any of the department agencies provide us with the stormwater utilities or stormwater drainage plans for the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristen Moore, followed by Lisa Comback.
Good afternoon, my name is Kristen Moore. I did have something planned to read to you all today, but I'm just gonna speak from my heart. After sitting here and listening to all of you, Mr. Brown, Mr. Kennedy, Diane, Dr. Green, I don't know all of your names, can you please stop just throwing this back and forth between each other? Can somebody please make a decision on what's gonna happen next? Who's going to do the testing? Are you gonna get the correct professionals to do the testing? And please don't look at me like I don't know what I'm talking about, I don't appreciate it. Okay? This is my son. This is his picture from last year. This is his second year in remission. In three days, on May 28th, it will be his third birthday. We started celebrating new birthdays. I had to take my son to an oncologist last week. You guys have no idea how hard it is for me to wake up every day and wonder if my son is safe. This is my son bolted to a radiation table. I don't know if any of you have ever seen this. They make a cast of their face and their chest, and they bolt them down so that with laser precision, they can shoot the radiation to kill his cancer, which is rare. It's been documented as rare by professionals and doctors at MD Anderson in Houston, Texas. Look up MD Anderson in Houston, Texas. It is the foremost research hospital for cancer in the world, not just the country, not just the state, the world. They know what they're doing. To tell me that his cancer was rare, I believe them 100%. This is another picture of Josh on the table getting treatments. He got up and went and did this every single day. Thank God he is in remission today? I do, I thank God every day. My son's last name is Strong. My maiden name is Strong. That's who we are, that's what we are, and that's how we got through this. But I am begging you to make a decision today. Don't put this off for another month. Oh, and we'll talk in another month, and then another month. Please, if there are children still going to that school at Bay Shore, I want to make sure they're not in danger. You cannot send these children to that school if there is danger. Irrigation wells, you have said that there are still two active irrigation wells. You show me one person, child or adult, that is gonna go up to a sprinkler in the middle of August in Florida and ask that sprinkler, are you irrigation or not? Are you safe or not? They're not gonna do that. Test those wells. You told us that they were never tested. Please test them. Please go further than six inches into the ground. Go to the bottom of that well and get us the answers, and save the children and the faculty of that school. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Comback, to be followed by Joe Kane.
Good afternoon, my name is Lisa Comback, and I'm a 1983 graduate of Bay Shore High School. We've heard a lot about cancer today, but I'm here as one of the 111 people, graduates from Bay Shore that suffer from autoimmune disease. After my four years at Bay Shore High School, I went on to make a really good life here in Manatee County. But that all changed in 2010. It started with swelling and pain in my left, in my right knee. Gradually, after seeking treatment for several years, I was reduced to having to use a cane and two braces just to walk short distances. After two and a half years, the doctors still hadn't figured out what was happening or why it was happening, but they told me that I had no other choice but to go through total knee replacement at the age of 48, 20 years younger than the average replacement patient. Five months after that surgery, I was back in the operating room undergoing the same surgery on the other leg. Just weeks before that surgery, one of my wrists became swollen. A month later, first one ankle, and then the other became so swollen, I was back to using a cane and three braces this time. In October of 2014, four years after the start of everything, I was tentatively diagnosed with seronegative inflammatory polyarthritis, which meant that they knew it was inflammatory, but they didn't know what it was. After two years of failed treatment, my diagnosis was narrowed down last fall to severe psoriatic arthritis and Sjogren's disease, both autoimmune disorders for which I have no family history. Every joint in both arms and both legs is affected to some degree. During the last six and a half years, these diseases have cost me a lot, a lot of money in medical bills, a lot of time off from work spent in doctor's offices, hospitals, testing facilities, and physical therapy clinics. They've taken away my ability to do a lot of the things that I love. Side effects and complications from the numerous medications I take or I've tried have made life very difficult. I'm not the only person in my family who lives with this serious disease. In 2011, my younger sister, Rebecca, a 1984 Bay Shore grad, excuse me, developed the first signs of what would be diagnosed as severe corso dystonia, which is a neuromuscular disorder, and among the causes listed, according to several sources, is exposure to toxic chemicals that changes the chemistry of the brain. Rebecca's disability is profound enough that she was forced to quit working altogether. Within three years of the start of her symptoms, which are like Parkinson's disease, she is now retired on disability at the age of 50. Today, I choose to... Today, I choose to focus on the great blessings that God has given me in the midst of this. On my fourth medication, disease-modifying medication, I'm praying that it continues to work, as many of them have failed in the past. And I'm wondering if in two years, I'll be able to take it at all because the Patient Assistance Program that sends me my medication now runs out in two years and the medication costs over $100,000 a year. Were we exposed to chemicals at Bay Shore High School? I don't know the answer to that, and I don't know that you can because there's no way for you to test the water that I was drinking out of the fountains in 1979, or the air that I was breathing in AP English class in 1983. But I hope that you can look into it further, do the testing, and I appreciate the fact that you are meeting about this and that you're doing something. These families need answers. My husband, my sister, my brother, my two brothers-in-law, we all graduated from Bay Shore High School.
Thank you. Thank you for coming forward. Joe Kane, followed by Michelle Lowe. And Heavenly Rutledge, I don't know if these are two people on one, one tag or not? Okay.
Can I add to the list? Show the, I'll put up anybody at the end.
My name's Joe Kane. I live a few blocks from where Rick Speed home was. It's hard for me to talk because this kid was so good and he never, never complained. And I remember having him go there the last few days and go, shame on me for five minutes for saying this, I would take him a joint. So to relieve the pain that he was going through so he could finish his meal. And now here he is, and now, and so, all you bureaucrats that we see here, we drool and get tired and yawn and everything like that, forget it, but you won't forget the survivors' families. That's what you're going to remember. So if I were running this show, I would haunt it with family members, come in here and remind you of your responsibility, not just to, not just to the community, but to their children. And Rick Speed was my best, one of my best, well, he was my best student. It was a Gulf Coast. It was a place where bad boys went. And he was really, really, really good. Lot of envious people there, but he was really, really good. And that's what you've got to remember. Haunt this bloody place until you get some results because you've got all the money in the world to use it, use it. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Lowe and Heavenly Rutledge, to be followed by Sharon Cummings.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Michelle Lowe. This is my daughter, Heavenly Rutledge. In 2009, on my daughter's third day of first grade, she fell out in class. She was unresponsive. They had to bayfly her to St. Joseph's. When she got there, they said that she probably wouldn't have made it. She had to learn how to walk, talk, eat, sit up. Everything as a newborn baby, she had to learn how to do all of that all over again. And I thank God that she's here with me today. And on 2014, I was diagnosed with brain cancer, stage three. I was diagnosed with anaplasma, astro, estro-toma. I had to get three brain surgeries. And in 2015, it returned in stage two. I had to get another brain surgery. Between both of us, we received six brain surgeries. I also have a sister that attended Bay Shore. She was never born with it, but she now has autoimmune deficiency. I have a brother that attended Bay Shore. He was a football player. He has alopecia. All I just want to know is, do you guys really know what's, what happened at that school or do you even care? I had three, three students that went to that school that was my friend, and they also died of a brain trauma. Three of them. As of today, I have, I used to be a really good student. I used to be able to talk, read, remember things, and now it's real hard for me to do. Like, right now, it's hard for me to even let you know what I want to say. But I pray to all of the other families, that children or husband or wife that didn't make it that went to that school. You know, it's something because it's more than 100 of even the people that went to that school that has cancer and that have died. And I don't think that that's just a coincidence at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming forward, Heavenly. Thank you for being here. You want to say something?
Okay, so, okay, so, hi. As you all know, my name's Heavenly, but this is really hard for me because it's just hard because like my mom, she passed this trait on to me, and it's a struggle, just to let y'all know. But y'all really got to do something about this. Like, how could y'all not know that they had this, that stuff in the water? Like, shouldn't you guys just like, just discuss, like, took notes on like what was in the water and whatnot? Like?
Thank you. Thank you so much for coming forward. Sharon Cummings, to be followed by Glenn Gibbelina. To be followed by Paul Riordan. Sorry, can't read it. Paul Riordan? Are those folks here?
Hi, my name is Paul Riordan. I graduated from Bay Shore in 1985. In my sophomore year, I was diagnosed with a brain tumor. And the tumor was an astrocytoma, which I believe, I'm not by any means medically qualified, but the neurologist at the time said that it was very rare that a person my age would have such a tumor like that. Normally, they're found in older people. So, I don't know. Every time I walk into my current neurologist's office, he finds it difficult to believe that I'm even alive. And so, I don't, you know, honestly, I don't know any of you people, I don't know anybody in the audience or anything. I found out about this, these events from another student or another student of Bay Shore, and I don't know anything about plumes, I don't know anything about the whole situation, but I do know that I had a brain tumor, I had radiation therapy, and it seems to me that there's, there must be something to all of these people and their illnesses. And I know that when I was taking a bus to school every day, that there was a lot of agricultural all up and down 70 or whatever that is. It's been a long time. So, in any case, I just think that there has to be something, there's got to be some common thread to, to all of these incidents and illnesses, and I just hope that you, you can find what the bottom line cause is and, and help other people. So fortunately, I'm, I'm, I'm not ill, I'll say, but I'm, you know, able to function and I haven't lost my life, and so I just hope that for, for other mothers and fathers that I, you know, I pray for you and I'm sorry for your grief. Thank you.
Thank you. Glenn? Glenn is the last person I have signed up to speak. If there's others that would like to address the group, please come forward and you'll have three minutes to speak.
My name is Glenn Gibbelina, community activist. I've been listening for the last couple of months on these hearings and just want to take a moment of silence for the folks that are still suffering, the ones that are no longer with us because of these actions. You know, I say this serenity prayer every day, and I'm going to read it. Give me the serenity to accept the things I cannot change, the courage to change the things I can, and the wisdom to know the difference. And I struggle with that, and I'm struggling with it today. This isn't new here. I'm going to do a shout out to John Reel from the Bradenton Times. This is 2015. An excellent, excellent article, not one, but two parts, and I'm going to enter this into the records, and I'll make sure I send you a copy of it. What we have here, we don't have any answers, but what I hear here is perjury, deceit, lies, unanswered questions. There should be people in jail, as far as I'm concerned. What I don't see here is a jar of water from the two wells. We're doing NATO, no action, talk only. There should be a jar of water sitting on that table with at least a preliminary examination of that water. This has gone on for years, and since the last BOC meeting, we talked about the wells. How hard is it to pick up the phone, call the maintenance department, "Hey, we've got two wells on that property, send the maintenance guy out there with a couple mason jars and bring them to me sealed." We haven't even done that. So I feel the pain of all these people out here, and I'm, and I'm on board with them. I think there needs to be some action, and quite frankly, if we don't get some action soon, I'm just going to go out there and get some samples. I'll find out when the timer's on, and I'll get a water, and I'll take it down to the health department, have it tested. We need action, they need closure. It's time to do something. Thank you.
All right. Sir, anyone else who would like to come forward to the podium? Now is your time. Okay, good.
My name is Andrea Ashton, and I was up here last time with a picture of my son, Andrew Decker, sitting and listening to everything today. It was a lot to take in. My question, as I was sitting there and listening, why would a school of only 24 years of old be knocked down? Why? It was only 24 years old. It was built in 1974, knocked down in 1968. Why? Why was school, I've seen schools older than that. Why? What is, what is being hidden from us that we don't know? Like I said before, I'm not speaking for myself. I'm speaking for my son and the people and the parents that need to know these answers. My son is gone. I can't bring him back, but I will be there again to see him. But I'm doing this for the ones that are left behind. I would just like to know why? Why, why, why? Why was that school knocked down? That's all I want to know, and I'm sure a lot of the other parents would like to know that also. It's in our heart. The ones we've lost are in our heart. We can't see them again, we will see them again, but they're not here on earth that we can ask these questions to them. I've asked my son a lot of questions in the last two weeks when he was alive, and the only thing he kept saying to me was, "Mom, I don't know." He'd complain about the smell, he'd complain about the taste, and he'd complain about the condition of the school. Why weren't we told that why that school was knocked down? That's all I would like to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Please come forward.
Good afternoon. My name is Marie Mannion, and I was not prepared to speak as my name is not on the list, but I'll do my best in three minutes. I'm a 1982 graduate of Bay Shore High School. My husband was a 1981 graduate of Bay Shore. He was diagnosed at the age of 47 with colon cancer and did not see his 50th birthday. My concern, I have my husband's medical testing. My concern with your comment is the, insurance companies do not pay for testing to see if this is genetic or not. I have school board testing, they, they will not cover that. My husband had different insurance, they did not cover that. Thank goodness, my husband made pretty good money and we had it done on our own. It costs us thousands of dollars, thousands. I have the report that it is not genetic. It is environmental, and I have that with me today. My other concern is people don't have that kind of money to pay for that type of testing. I would assume that you could get your information from that website. That is the reason why they have that website, is to monitor the cancers in this area. To piggyback on the lady that just spoke, because again, I did not prepare for this, I didn't even, it's not even me to speak, but it's not only Bay Shore. Manatee Elementary was built in 1932. Manatee High School was built in, I don't know, but the three schools that were tore down are all within an area. Bay Shore Elementary, gone. Bay Shore High School, gone. VOTEC is now, gone. Why? That does not make sense. Manatee Elementary is 1932, it was full of mold. It is still there today. Why those schools in that area? And I can't think of what else I was going to say, but that is a concern that she had just brought up. And again, I do have the medical records, and I'm just concerned that people don't have that kind of money to find out if, if you can take out those concerns like she mentioned about genetics. But I do have my report, and I have not looked to see if my husband's social security or anything, so I'm not really willing to turn that over today until I look through that. Oh, I know, the other concern is there is a board member that's been a board member. She has, was contacted many years ago, several years ago. There is a school board employee that is still working that ordered a drill bit to dig into a tank. He is still working for the school board today, he will tell you. He ordered that drill bit from Mr. Willhite that died of cancer. He was the one over, the people that came from the DOE to go around to these tanks, and he is no longer here. There is an employee that ordered a six-foot drill bit for one of those tanks. And I think I had more, but my time's up. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much, everyone, for coming forward and sharing this information. Any further comments, questions from the board?
I have another question.
Well, Carol, go ahead.
Okay. I think the school board said earlier that you were going to test the wells, that, right? You had a meeting, you had discussed it?
They have to take action, I hear.
No, that's for them, that we can't take action today, anyway.
No.
Right? I mean, you, you guys had done it on your board, right?
No, I indicated that's what we will be bringing to our board. They have to take action.
Okay.
To give us the authority to go test the wells and have a third party come in to review all the documents.
And as far as how are we going to do this, Madam Chair, Mr. Chair, as far as Dr. Bency's recommendation, and then, I know Cheryl probably has a major database of everybody that you can contact the people to get the pathologies or histologies, and maybe they don't have them, but there are places that they could have been, like in the hospitals and stuff like that, correct? Health depart, I mean.
What we'd like to do is have a call with leadership in Tallahassee and the environmental health experts, determine next steps, talk to Dr. McKinnon regarding pulling the data that already exists in the system, and then what gaps do we have, and then trying to find that data locally with the families.
And the money will all help you, if you have to get money, will all, I'm sure all the boards will lobby our lobbyists, I mean, our state legislators.
But we would want a formal process to make sure that, again, those records of that medical information is handled appropriately.
Okay.
Okay, so what I hearing at this, what I'm hearing at this time is that Dr. Bency is going to put together a protocol, if you will, a program where we're going to go from here. She will share that information with Assistant County Administrator Karen Wynden so that we're aware of what's hap- we're aware of what's happening when. Is that fair to say? Okay. And Dr. Green, you'll let us know about your actions when you get that opportunity for the school board to take that action? And we can share the information, we have the ability to share the information with the public when that happens? That's, I just want to summarize that. Mr. Smith, and then?
Yes, yes. Madam Chair, I don't want us to forget what Mr. Palmer mentioned. I hear we call a lot of names, Tallahassee, money from Tallahassee, public officials. I just want to make sure when we leave here that we have a chain of command dealing with these ruckus and someone is responsible for these ruckus, they're not 25 different people, and they spread all across the state of Florida. And documents that we have not seen in this box, which we don't know how many documents it is today, that these are protected and gathered in a safe environment so experts can look at it, that we have a chain of command response written, who has what, where it's at, and who's looking at what, that we don't have public officials walking around with medical ruckus in their pockets.
No, it's illegal.
Or sending stuff through email.
It's illegal.
You know, I'm just making sure, I haven't seen it done before, sending it through email that we got a chain of command that someone is held responsible. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. I think it's, I think it's Dr. Bency. Thank you for nodding your head, yes. Appreciate that. School Board Member Cologne.
I'm just going to say I will personally bring that up at the next board meeting and make sure it's on our agenda.
Thank you. Anything else? Any other comments from our staff folks who've been here? I think we do have a lot of information. You've shared a lot of information. We've all seen it today. I definitely appreciate all of the folks that live here and want to see this problem resolved. Some sort of resolution, is there a cluster? What is the cause? We're going to follow the steps that protocol says we're going to follow and get the information. And I know it's hard when you've been working on it for so long, I know that. So all we can do is keep trying. Anything else for the good order? Okay. Seeing nothing, we are adjourned.